A list of all the names. Was in the docket, all of the lists.
It's the great, so we all set? Awesome, thank you. Uh, Vice President.
Motion recessed executive session and reconvene in open session.
All in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
Motion to approve both opioid settlement cases and authorize a solicitor or town administrator to sign necessary documents on behalf of the town.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to ratify the NEA teacher's contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to seal the executive session minutes pursuant to section forty-two, forty-eight, seven of Rhode Island general law.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, uh, just cleaning up some executive session, uh, stuff and we're gonna start our zoning board interviews, um, there are, uh, Wendy, there's six appointments.
Six appointments.
Six appointments and there's four new people that applied, we've previously interviewed, uh, the other folks, so, you know, when they applied and been on the board, they're looking for reappointments, some of those folks, so, um, we all, we made it a policy years back to interview all new candidates, and so that's what we're gonna do, so we'll start the interviews in order on, on the sheet that we have, and there's seven questions, one for each of us. Uh, Council Connington will start with the first question and we'll go through question number seven to Council Roberts, okay? And then we'll, we'll make appointments. Yeah, so he'll ask them to come up to the lectern and, um, and so Georgia, is Georgia McDonald here?
Uh, we have a motion to begin and, um...
Yeah.
Motion begins said interviews.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thanks Wendy. Is Georgia here? No?
Did verify that she was coming, um, so...
Does she think it's six-thirty?
It's six o'clock.
Okay. Alicia? Come on up Alicia. You're the first one.
I love being first.
For that day, there's nothing wrong, better than being last, right?
I guess, we were just discussing that.
Just, you know, if you're nervous, don't be nervous, it's just, it's just us and we're just gonna have some questions and answer them to the best of your ability, okay?
Okay.
So Pete, uh, Council Connington, if you'd like to start with the first question.
Uh, good evening, Ms. Reyes.
Hi.
Um, why do you wanna be on the zoning board review?
I could probably answer that very simply by saying, New, uh, Middletown is my home and I love where I live, and I'd like to see it be the best that it can be, um, but I think that I need to explain a little bit how I got to this point, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
About a year or so ago, I decided that, um, I needed to be a little bit more informed, involved in what's going on in my town, so I started attending meetings, typically would sit in the back, just listen, take in information, um, there's a lot going on in this town, and I admire all of you for keeping up with it, um, but during one meeting, something came up, um, regarding zoning ordinances and changes in the land use table, and I had to speak up because there was nobody else, nobody else had, had anything to say. Yeah, um, so that's how it started, um, I was welcomed to speak as I, as I am today, um, I was very, um, very pleased, the, um, council's reaction to my thoughts, so I continued going to meetings, I attended some planning board meetings, I attended some zoning board meetings, um, witnessed the exchange of information, the interaction between board members and the community and stakeholders, and was also very impressed, um, these were volunteers, um, volunteering their time, um, to serve the community to better it any way they can, um, and I decided I wanted to be part of that, um, so I thought that this would be a good way to serve my community, um, and help to make it the very best it can be.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yes.
Good evening.
Hi.
Um, this is kinda on your actual survey, so this should be pretty easy, is what experience do you have that would qualify you to be a member of the zoning?
Um, as far as zoning and legalities, I don't have any specific experience, but I have worked in this community, um, thirty-five plus years, um, in one of our largest, um, employers of the island, I've worked at Newark, um, I have worked with, um, various teams, levels of management, um, on many projects as a team member, managing a task, as a manager managing a team, and later on in, um, in a leadership position where we had to make decisions, come up with plans, um, and it involves a great deal of collaboration, um, sometimes compromise, investigation, and we had to work at a team to get, as a team to get the job done, and I feel that, um, community development is similar, we all have to work together as a team, um, do some investigation, um, compromise, come together to get a job done, um, to serve the community, so, um, that's my professional experience, which is basically, um, more character and work ethic.
Good, congratulations on your thirty years.
Uh, thank you, it's thirty-five plus.
Good.
Thank you.
Vice President.
Hi Alicia.
Hi.
What useful knowledge or perspective from your own personal experience would you bring to the position?
Um, I have been a lifetime resident of Aquinic Island, born, raised here, I raised my family here, um, and I have experienced a great deal of life changes and witnessed many changes, um, on the island, um, you know, when I was younger, I was here when the Navy was a large presence, and a lot of people don't even recognize the town from that, that period of time, um, you know, I've come up like independently, I've been a renter, I've lived in affordable housing situations, um, I have, um, been involved in, recently in several real estate transactions, I sold a home, bought a home, worked very closely with real, uh, real estate agents to purchase homes, um, or assist in purchasing homes for my children and my family, um, I know the community and I know what it takes to survive here, to survive the changes, um, and I think that, that experience will lend itself nicely to being in a position where, um, where we would need to, um, take into consideration homeowners', um, desires for, for their property and the, um, retaining the character, um, and quality of life of our community, um, and like I said, longtime resident, I've seen a lot, been through a lot, and I wanna see the, um, I wanna see the town be the best it can be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alicia, what, um, what do you think is the most important responsibility of a zoning board member?
That's a tough one, um, I think that it's, um, the responsibility to be fair, to listen, um, be respectful of, um, from anybody, be respectful of everybody that comes to the board with any kind of request or an action that's required, um, you know, know the, know our ordinances, be able to interpret those ordinances in order to, um, allow homeowners to have the very best experience as homeowners, as well as preserving the integrity and quality of life of their neighbors and basically the entire neighborhood, um, it's, um, making sure that, um, I keep up with, um, with the regulations, um, listen, be fair.
Okay, excellent, thank you. This is Von Villas.
Alicia, what would you like Middletown to look like five years from now?
As an old timer, I'd like to see much of the same as it is, um, a little bit revitalized, maybe freshened up a little bit, um, I'd like to see, um, more, um, year-to, year-round recreational opportunities for residents, um, I'd like to see some efforts to foster, um, family communities, um, bring in more families, make things, um, attractive for families, and I got, in five years, I'd like to see a nice, brand-new school, um, filled with, um, student body, faculty and staff that, um, appreciate what we have and are part of the community and involved in the community, you're welcome.
Council Logan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, what do you believe Middletown's most important land use issue, how should it be addressed?
Um, I think that one of the major issues is, um, maintaining the character of the town, um, maintaining some open space, bringing in some, um, like I said, year-round recreational opportunities, something to attract, you know, year-round residents, to make it a family-oriented community, um, what else, there was, um, I don't know, when I think about it, all kinds of things come into my head, but, um, and I think that, you know, one of the ways to do that is to, um, maybe give a little bit more attention to affordable housing, um, community services, so that it is, it is an attractive community to bring in families and, um, support some of our, um, our local business owners, as well as, um, some of the, like, our big, um, community partners, you know, Navstate, Newark, um...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Council Roberts.
Hi Alicia.
Hi.
What idea, um, ideas or suggestions do you have regarding economic development in Middletown?
Hey, I think that that is, um, economic development is a tricky challenge, balancing economic development and quality of life, um, one of the things that I've witnessed is, like I said, there are a lot of things going on in Middletown, um, and I think we might need to slow things down a little bit, because there's, um, a lot of projects going on independently, um, and I fear that we're not, we're not considering the balance between economic growth and development and quality of life for our residents, um, and like I said, I think that if we invest, invest more in our community, infrastructure, housing, that would make the community more attractive, um, and we can retain our, our full-time residents now and attract, um, more families, I mean, we've just, we've just invested a huge amount of money in a new school, and one of my fears is that when it finally opens up, um, that we're not gonna have the student body to, um, to fully utilize that facility, um, and I'm hoping that we can come up with, you know, some balance of growth and, um, development of infrastructure, housing, something for the community and the residents, so that's, um, so that we can look back and say, that was a hard thing to invest in, but we did the right thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'll ask the last question, um, regular zoning board meetings typically take place the fourth Tuesday of each month, starting at six PM, and there are special meetings called as needed, uh, Alicia, are you able to attend those, 'cause one of the things we look at when we do reappointments is, you know, um, attendance on folks, just to make sure, and life takes over, we get that, but it's important that we have members there.
Looking forward to this question, it's an easy one, yes.
Awesome, thank you so much.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Rebecca Rogers.
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Hi Ms. Rogers.
So, Councilor, uh, Connington.
Sure. Uh, why do you want to be on the zoning board?
So I would like to be on the zoning board because I grew up here, um, I went to Aquinic for elementary school, I went to Gade, graduated from Middletown in twenty-fourteen, um, I grew up here, so again, this is my community too, I just bought a house off of Forest Ave, and I have two young boys that will be starting school, one is five and he will be going to Forest Ave, and I just had another baby about a month ago, so...
Congratulations.
Thank you, so this is my home, it's been my home, um, and I'd really like to be a part of what goes on here, especially raising my family here, I met my husband here, so Middletown really is my whole life, and so I'd like to be a part of that and be able to make decisions so that Middletown can be the best that it can be.
Thank you.
Excellent, Council Toronto.
Yes, well, I'm also a graduate, I went to Olive and School.
I went to, I was, I think I was the last class of Linden before it closed, actually, so...
So thank you for coming tonight, so it's good to see young people get involved, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, what experience do you have that would qualify you to be a member of the zoning board?
So I am, uh, I am an attorney and I am, um, I represent kids that are in DCYF custody, so I work for the court-appointed special advocates office, I am in Providence, um, but, um, I think, so I have a legal background, so I think a lot of the experience that three years of law school taught me, um, being able to analyze things, being able to balance different opinions and perspectives, um, and being able to really look at the whole picture and find that balance between, um, what's best for some, what's best for others, and hopefully finding a, a middle ground that can accommodate everyone, um, other than that, I don't, I don't have any zoning experience, um, I do family law, so, um, but obviously, um, I know a little bit about some of the zoning policies and...
Sure, okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President.
Hi Rebecca.
Hi.
What useful knowledge or perspective from your own personal experience would you bring to the position?
So, um, I am starting to get involved in my community, I'm, I'm twenty-nine, um, and so I think I'm starting to get involved with different things, um, I'm the secretary for the Middletown Youth Soccer Board, um, and I just started that last year, my son played soccer and loved it, and so I wanted to be involved in that, um, from my own life, again, like I, I grew up here and there's a lot of things that I think Middletown could be, um, selfishly, I want more things for kids, I think, um, you know, we used to have a movie theater, we used to have a bowling alley, we don't really have anything for our young people anymore, um, at least in Middletown, you know, that don't involve them going out into Newport and doing other things or going off the island, um, so I really would like to, to see things for kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What do you think is the most important responsibility of a zoning board member?
I think just remembering that the decisions that we make are really long-lasting on our community and being able to really listen to different people's views and how they want, how, how they want Middletown to look, and I think it's important to be empathetic and listen and people that will come in and have different backgrounds and different ideas and, um, again, being able to find that balance, um, but just, again, the decisions that we make really have a, a strong impact on the community and, and how things will be for future generations.
Okay, thank you. Council Von Villas.
What would you like Middletown to look like five years from now?
Um, I want it to, in certain aspects, stay the same, um, but in other ways, um, I want people to stay, you know, I think it's not a secret that there's a housing crisis and affordable housing, um, it's, a lot of my friends can't afford to live down here anymore and are moving off the island, and that takes away from, um, jobs down here, employment down here, if people can't live here, um, so really, um, yeah, it's, it's tough for a lot of people, I think, so...
Okay, Council Logan.
What do you believe is Middletown's most important land use issue and how should it be addressed?
Um, I think probably the most important thing is this, the short-term rentals and Airbnbs, um, you know, I think again that there's a balance, I know different towns, Portsmouth and Newport have kind of done their own thing, um, and I think from a homeowner's perspective, being able to, you know, rent out, let's say for Airbnb, to make some extra money through the summer, especially if there's no hotels available in Newport, or people that just don't wanna be right in the city and kind of be in Middletown versus people that need housing all year round and, you know, can't afford to, um, vacate a home for three months so that someone can rent and, um, so I think finding a balance for that.
Council Roberts.
Hi Rebecca, what ideas or suggestions do you have regarding economic development in Middletown?
I think there's a decent amount of empty space, you know, when I think of things, I think of the old Bennys that has been vacated for some time, or, um, Ruby Tuesdays, which has been, um, vacant for a very long time, and so, um, I think just, there's a lot that we can do, you know, I'd like to see, like, again, selfishly, something for kids, a trampoline park, or something that will get families to come here, to wanna stay here, to be able to have activities for kids, um, that are young, um, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right Rebecca, last question, regular zoning board meetings typically take place the fourth Tuesday of each month, starting at six PM, additionally, there's special meetings that are called on a, on a needed basis, does your schedule allow you to attend meetings?
Yes, it does.
It does, okay, excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, Christopher Rowe.
Good evening.
Good evening. Uh, Council Connington.
Sure. Mr. Rowe, why do you want to be part, or why do you wanna be on the zoning board?
Well, I've spent my entire adult life volunteering in a variety of ways, I'm retired Navy, did twenty-two years, um, I've spent years as a scout master and Boy Scouts, I've been with Special Olympics for twenty-eight years, um, I'm currently part of the Butts Hill Fort Restoration Committee, I've been involved with a non, uh, veteran support nonprofit, all of that stuff is all geared towards the individual, um, people that I'm, I'm volunteering for, and, you know, I've, I've had a few people that have suggested and have said, hey, we think you should run for town council, I'm not interested in your jobs, I'm a deckplate chief machinist mate, deckplate machinist mates in the Navy, we're the ones that run the Navy, we work behind the scenes, doing the stuff that needs to get done, so that you guys in the spotlight can stay in the spotlight and I'll stay in the shadows, I kinda see the zoning board as the same way, um, so I think that's where, as I have looked into ways to get more involved with my own community right here, instead of everything on a statewide or, you know, elsewhere level, individual, that's a way to, I think, with my background and experience, a way to really contribute to our community, I've been living in since ninety-seven.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Council Toronto.
Good evening.
Evening.
Uh, thanks for applying, you know, to be on the zoning board, um, again, we, we're always looking for volunteers to come in and assist, so thank you for, you know, putting your, and it sounds like you do a lot of volunteering as it is through a, a number of other organizations, so, thank you. What experience do you have that would qualify you to be a member of the zoning board?
Well, I'm gonna try, I'll try to keep your question and yours separate, because my background, everything kinda, there's a lot of crossovers, um, I started out in the Navy as a nuclear engineer, um, so getting into requirements, this is the way things are supposed to be done, into diagrams, working on equipment, on machinery as a propulsion plant engineer, um, getting really deep into the weeds and understanding everything to become a subject matter expert, uh, is something that is, I've been doing my whole life, um, so, you know, working with drawings, diagrams, regulations, and I think the zoning board, that's a big part of what the zoning board is, is simply regulations, these are, you know, this is, you guys decide, you know, this is what the regulations are gonna be, and the zoning board's job is to enforce them or find when there are the exceptions to the rules that should be applied.
Right, and I should have thanked you for your career, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice President.
All right. Chris, what useful knowledge or perspective from your own personal experience would you bring to the position, I realize that's close, but...
That's close, but, so, so I tried to make sure I was like dividing between the two, um, on the personal level, outside from my military career and all, and all, you know, everything with that, um, one of the jobs that I had after I retired was the, working for DEM, so there's a, if you, so you may have heard of it or not, there's a, a manual called the, uh, Best Management Practices, uh, for wetlands protection, I'm one of the key people in the development of that manual, all the drawings and illustrations that are in it are my drawings, um, so that's, having, that kinda gets back into the professional side of experience with digging into and understanding what the regulations are, 'cause the, the Wetlands Protection Manual and DEM requirements is zoning, uh, aside from that, I've been a homeowner for, since nineteen... Since nineteen ninety, when I fought, when I bought my first house. So I've dealt with zoning stuff as a homeowner. I was also, while I was still in active duty before I retired, I started a real estate rental business right here on the island and. Between Newport and Middletown. At one point, I owned six properties with several of those being multifamily. So I've dealt with as a, as a homeowner, but also as a rental property owner. I also owned a mini convenience store for a while in Newport, so I've been a business owner. Worked with architects, one of the, one of the first jobs I had when I got out of the Navy was working for a couple of architects. And one of them is actually a house, a garage kitchen addition that overlooks. This hill, this building, because it's right up here on, off Forest Ave, on this side of Forest Ave now. I actually brought some of the things from the, from the DEM manual for examples of the work that I've done.
Thank you.
Okay. Chris, what do you think is the most important responsibility of a zoning board member?
Finding the balance between established zoning regulations. And the desires of applicants who are looking for changes or. Variations to the zoning board, to the zoning regulations and. Part of that balances is, how's that going to affect either one with a applicant for a zoning board issue? How's that going to affect what they're looking to do, as well as how's that going to affect the neighbors and the residents of the town overall? So it's, that's, I think, the toughest issue is finding that balance. Now, you can't make everybody happy all the time, but you're really, but you're trying to. So I think that's the toughest. Job.
Thank you. Council on Villas.
What would you like Middletown to look like five years from now?
I'd like to see increased. Economic development in order, because we're going to need that in order to get the funds. Coming into the town in order to keep up with infrastructure and. At the same time, as has been said already, recreational usage, residents that we can't leave, you know, the economic development can't be left out, so. Five years down the road, seeing the, just improvements in. Visual, like, you know, going down West Main Road, as was mentioned, Ruby Tuesdays, that's been closed for fifteen years or something like that. You know, so development along stretches of town that, that make it a more visually appealing. Town for people coming in, but also residential for things like recreation. And events. I'd like to see, I'd like to see the town doing more town events that are trying to work at bringing the community together. In residents from all over town. Or events.
Okay, Council Logan.
Thank you for your service, sir.
You're welcome.
What do you believe is Middletown's most important land use issue and how should it be addressed?
This kind of goes into the, into Barbara's question. Because I think the, it gets into the whole economical, residential and recreational usage. And I think the comprehensive plan, I don't, I haven't seen the comprehensive plan, so I don't know what's in it, but I think that's a key. Piece to it, because that's the whole purpose of the comprehensive plan is supposed to be for moving the town forward. So before I could answer a whole lot on that, I need to get into, and I, because again, I'm a technical, in the depth kind of guy that. That I think that's an important aspect to be looked at. So I don't, I can't really say I haven't got specific ideas without. Getting into and going, oh, okay, because that's the kind of thing, the comprehensive plan, it's the kind of thing that gives me ideas. Of, well, oh wait, there's, that's a good idea, and what if we also did this?
Thank you.
Okay. Council Roberts.
Hello, Chris. What ideas or suggestions do you have regarding economic development in Middletown?
This again gets into comprehensive plan. I think trying to work with one of the, the key things, I think, because I see West Main Road the most because of where, you know, where I live, off Chases Lane. Where the, the, most of the traffic that I see. I've lost track of your question.
What suggestions or ideas do you have regarding economic development in Middletown?
Looking for, I think, looking for any types of incentives in order to. Bring new business in for economic development. As well as whatever incentives that we can do to come up with to get things like Ruby Tuesdays taken care of. Or other places that maybe don't visually match what we, you know, everyone envisions of a, of Middletown being a quaint New England town. So I think there's a lot of visual stuff that, that we could try to do that would, and help aesthetically, but also help with. Economically as well at the same time. You know, I see places like the land that is right there on Valley Road, that they've finally, you know, they finally started getting stuff built on it. They've got, you know, I, I drove by the. The Mini Golf yesterday, and it was packed. Now, they've got the new building there, but there's still a whole bunch of that that's empty, so I think there are. Still a lot of undeveloped areas of town. That are ripe for economical, economic development. And I think trying to work with that and those owners, the owners of those properties, to see what we can, you know, what can be done with them. To also bring in. New development.
Thank you. Okay. So the last question, Chris, is, uh. A regular board, is it regular zoning board meetings typically take place on the fourth Tuesday of each month, starting at six PM, special meetings are called as needed? Can you make those meetings?
Yes, luckily.
I know you wouldn't be here, it's kind of a, but we have to ask, you know.
Luckily, Tuesday night is one of the few nights of the week that I currently, I don't have anything planned for on any Tuesday nights, with all the stuff I do. Tuesday nights are open.
Excellent, thank you so much. Did, um, did Georgia, Georgina McDonald, did she show up? No?
She did email and say she was going to be here at six.
Okay. Okay. All right, so thank you, everyone. It's, it's a lot of times, it's not easy to get up in front of a crowd and answer questions like that publicly, so. But it develops thick skin, so it's all good stuff. And we appreciate any volunteers that, anybody that volunteers. It's not an easy, uh, not an easy thing to do, time wise, but it certainly. Takes time away from your families and, um, and, but when you love your community, that's what you do, so. Okay. So let's move on to number three, which is appointment of six members to the zoning board of review. So Wendy, I just have a, a technical question. She doesn't show up, she's out, right? I mean, she's just not here, so I don't want to be cold like that, but it is what it is, it's just, right, okay. I just wanted to make sure. So appointment of six members of the zoning board of review, one vacancy. Of a regular member, term expiring April twenty thirty, one vacancy, regular member to complete a term expiring April twenty twenty six. One vacancy, regular member to complete a term expiring April twenty twenty eight. One vacancy, first alternate, term expiring April twenty twenty six. One vacancy, second alternate, term expiring April twenty twenty six. And one vacancy, third alternate, term expiring April twenty twenty six.
All right.
Okay, so, any nominations? How do you want to?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Um, and, and again, this is, this is not a, on Mr. Lombardi, but isn't he also on the state zoning board of some type now? Is he no longer on that?
I, I don't know that.
No? I thought I saw that at a meeting, he brought that up. You guys don't, okay.
Don't know that.
Everybody's looking, like, no answers then? That's not a case.
I thought he worked for the state.
For the state, but not on.
Not in a zoning capacity?
No.
No. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Secretary of State's office.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, who wants to start nominations?
I will.
Okay.
Motion to appoint Rick Lombardi, regular member, term expiring April twenty thirty.
Second.
Okay.
So, just, could I suggest, so you need to go position by position, just to be clear?
Right.
We're doing the first position.
And you don't need to second?
No, there's no second, but.
I'm just.
It's all good.
I'm stepping in for the master clerk here, so I'll refrain from doing that further.
Not only the town administrator poses as a clerk, see? That's how it goes.
A poser.
The opposing, there you go. Okay, so any other nominations? Council Carnetton.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mark Donahue for the, from a second alternate position to a regular position. Which expires in April of two thousand.
We're gonna, we're gonna take one at a time now.
So this, these, these would be nominations for the position of regular member, term expiring April twenty thirty.
Right, we're taking one at a time. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Yep.
Okay.
I would.
Charlie.
Yeah, I would like to nominate Christopher Rowe for that position.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. Let's take the first one first. It was a nomination placed for Rick Lombardi for the first alternate. For his term expiring April twenty thirty. I mean, first regular, a regular member, term expiring April. Twenty thirty. So, all in favor of Rick? Yeah, hang on.
So you have all three of them, and then everybody votes for, there's a roll call vote, you vote on one person, so if it's, you have.
He's using Rick first. He was the first one that was nominated.
So for the April.
So they do, we're on April twenty thirty.
Right.
So now they're going to do the roll call vote for Rick first, and then they would do Mr. Rowe if Rick is not appointed.
I don't believe that's the way it reads. That's not how it reads, so everybody is a roll call vote, you vote. Whoever gets the majority gets appointed. If a majority isn't, isn't selected, then the bottom person falls off and you do it again.
Yep. So, so, so Wendy, yeah, they would, you know, Peter, you vote for one of the two. And so on and so on, and then we count them up.
Right. Okay.
There are two, there are two people, two people have been nominated for this position, roll call vote, everybody says which of those two people they. Are voting for.
I, I vote for Rick Lombardi.
You're voting for who?
Rick Lombardi.
Rick Lombardi.
Yep.
Uh, Rick.
Rick? Rick?
Rick.
Rick. Christopher Rowe.
Okay.
So Rick is appointed.
Okay. Okay, so now we're going to need nomination for. The regular vacancy term expiring April twenty twenty six. Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mark Donahue.
Okay, are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Anton Viveras.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Council Conneton, your vote.
Uh, I'm gonna vote for Anton Viveras.
Okay. Dennis. Okay, Tom.
Mark.
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 Mark. Anton.
Okay. Okay. Now we have a regular, one vacancy, regular member to complete a term expiring April twenty twenty eight. Are there any nominations?
Twenty twenty six.
We just did twenty twenty six. We're doing twenty twenty eight.
Go ahead, twenty twenty six, I didn't hear the result of that.
Mark, quarter three. Any nominations for term, for regular vacancy term expiring April twenty twenty eight?
I'd like to nominate Rebecca Rogers.
Okay, any other nominations?
Mark Donahue. Oh, he just got that.
He's already on.
I was gonna vote for Anton, but I'll vote for Anton.
You want to nominate Anton?
Yes.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, Council Carnetton, your vote.
Anton.
Okay, Dennis.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote for Anton. He was currently the third alternate. I think, uh, I'm, I'm gonna vote, I'm gonna vote for him.
Tom.
What were the two choices?
Anton or Rebecca Rogers.
Rebecca Rogers.
Okay, I'll vote for Rebecca.
Rebecca.
I'm also voting for Rebecca.
Rebecca.
Okay. Let's move to the first. Write that down. Let's move to the first alternate term expiring April twenty twenty six. Any nominations?
Christopher Rowe.
Okay, any other nominations?
Alicia Reyes.
Alicia, okay. Council Carnetton, your vote.
Uh, Alicia Reyes.
Okay, Dennis.
Uh, Christopher.
Okay.
Alicia.
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 Alicia. Christopher.
Okay. Okay, let's go to a, um, one vacancy, second alternate, term expiring April twenty twenty six. Any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Christopher Rowe.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay.
Did Anton get in there anyway?
Any nominations?
I'll just leave it, don't get it.
Okay, well, we have one more, so.
Okay.
All right, so your vote.
Chris Rowe.
Chris.
Chris.
Chris. Chris.
Clean sweep, all right. Uh, and the last vacancy, uh, for the third alternate term expiring April twenty twenty six. Nominations?
Anton.
Anton Viveras, any other nominations? There's nobody else, so your vote.
Anton.
Dennis.
Anton.
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 All right, excellent. The reason there's so many vacancies is because, and that's a painful exercise, as you can see. Because it's almost like the rules change each time or, or.
Recently.
Uh, recently, anyway, is that when they, when the state changed the laws, zoning board was probably, was the only regulatory board we had. So we're planning as advisory, and most of the boards we have are advisory boards. That's a regulatory board, and it lost some of its power. And some of that power shifted to the planning board, so some of the members. Went to the planning board or applied to the planning board, so it had a bunch of vacancies that opened up and. Uh, that's one of the reasons, so that's why there's so many, typically we don't have that many for. You know, openings in one, one board, but we thank you all for applying, we know you all do a great job and. We're looking forward to, to, to your contributions, okay? Thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Mention, and I know that, uh, do they get sworn in, Wendy, or?
They do, we'll send them a letter and then they'll come in and I'll swear them.
One of the other things that we'll do for the new members, uh, would be to schedule sort of a training session, uh, just to go over. What the zoning board does and what their jobs are and those kind of things.
The other thing I'd like to have them, if we could get somebody down here from the Ethics Commission, like we typically do, we do it. Typically in an election year and we go through it and, you know. Ball board members can show up just to make sure, because sometimes there's rules you might not understand. And, you know, you may have to recuse yourself, so we just want to make sure, uh, you know, we give you as much knowledge as power, right? So that you can make good, informed decisions for yourselves.
If they can't get someone down here, they can do it online. There's a, there's, there's an online training.
Okay, but if you could, you could work with them, Wendy, to set that up, that'd be great. Thank you so much, okay. All right, let's, um, you guys want to take a break for a minute? Do you want to keep going? The reason I say that because I have to use the bathroom, but if you want to keep going, go right ahead. It's up to you.
I'm gonna push you.
You are?
Yeah, we're voting.
Okay, all right, let's go. So if I get up, that's what's happening. Let's go to the regular meeting, six thirty PM, town updates, number four. The town administrator provide an update on A, town projects, B, school building project, and C, library building project.
Motion begin town projects, school building project, and library building project updates.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Mr. Collins will provide an update in the school and library projects.
So, so library first. On June ninth, the town received six proposal for the architectural services for the new library. Out of those six proposals, three vendors were picked, they were interviewed, and out of that. Odin's Architecture, which is in front of you today, is recommended, that's in front of you for an approval. I think the library board might have approved them early. I think the library board might have approved them earlier today. The RFQ for construction managers already out on the market, and we're anticipating either the end of the month, or early next month, we'll have a recommendation in front of you for the contract manager for the project. Any questions on the library? Yes, sir.
Have we established, like, a budget for the projects? And then also, the building itself, it's not gonna be all the library, have we established that yet?
Yeah, we, we've established, we've established a square footage amount that would be used for town purposes. We do have a roundabout number that we're looking to, um, spend on the library, yes.
Okay, so the, the building itself, though, is not gonna be all library, so what, what percentage of that do you think's gonna?
Um, we're looking at it probably about five thousand square feet to accommodate town offices, which would leave the library still twenty-five thousand square feet, which is more than enough to accommodate the programming need to take place in there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's, that's been an ongoing discussion. Hasn't really been defined and everything, but it's been an ongoing discussion since I've entered into it, that there would be a portion of that used for that.
But that's built into the costs here, that you're.
Well, the, well, um, the, the cost would have to be separate, obviously, some of this is gonna get reimbursed through the state library fund, so the, it would have to be separated out. Even, even services, right, architectural services used to design the office space would have to be pulled out separately. So, uh, two different costs, costs associated with that.
Yeah, cuz it, typically, as you know, like, you establish your fees for the architects and things based on a project.
In, in.
More defined.
Absolutely, in the architect's contract, it specifies that. Also, in Downs' contract, it also specifies that, that there are two projects within the project.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Dennis?
Yes, thank you, um. I'm gonna go on the record in saying that we didn't talk about office space for, for the town when we originally purchased that building, that building was purchased to house the library. So I'm just gonna say, has changed. As of tonight, I mean, we've been talking about it, in regards to what we heard was, wait a minute, no, it's not. So that was changing, so I'm not sure when you're saying it started, and you were aware of it, but when we originally purchased that building, it was for the library.
Yep, my, my statement was since I've been involved in it, so.
Okay.
There was purchased, the, the building was purchased before I arrived here, my statement was, when I started getting involved, that was always kind of something that was talked about. What happened before that, uh, Councilman, you're right, I don't know.
Okay, thank you, and then, what was the size of the building, library, when it was gonna be over in the center?
Um, I believe it was around twenty-four thousand square feet.
Twenty-four thousand square feet?
Correct, but it would be two stories, so actually, there was less space.
Really? And it was gonna cost that much more to, to build?
Um, yeah, the, we, we talked about that, it was, it was a twenty-four million dollar project.
For the same space? That we're getting over here? Okay.
Spaces, we, we estimate about ten mil, ten million.
Okay. So that was just my question, because I know that we've had conversations, and I've been searching for that number for what, because we've talked about employer, employees that are gonna be in that building, and how many we're gonna need to, you know, additional, do we have to hire more? So there's been questions around that, so that we can determine what the investment's gonna need to be, from a personnel standpoint as well, so it's good that we have a number, so thank you.
You're welcome. The other thing I would add, I mean, originally, we had purchased the house across the street at three fifty-one for the overflow of finance staff, um, so that was something that the council was aware of, as well as the cost of renovation for it. Um, but what we're able to do is, with the, the space at the library, besides the fact that we don't have to deal with employees crossing the highway, which is in, really dangerous, uh, and avoiding the cost of renovation, that parcel now will go towards the affordable housing development that will occur uh, between that property and the property to the, uh, east of it, so, um, it, it creates a logical parcel to create the affordable housing, which we need. Um, it utilizes the space at, uh, Enterprise Center better, and in the long term, for taxpayers, it, it minimizes our operating costs, because we're, we're, we're trying to, you know, whether it's the school project or the library project, be as efficient as possible with the amount of square feet we operate, um, over the long term, is from a maintenance and utility standpoint.
So, but, would you agree that that was not the intent when we originally purchased that, or was that always an attempt? That we always anticipated we were gonna move accounting over there, or it's part of the town hall?
So, I would disagree, but I'll let Paul.
Can I just interject here, cuz I just came back from the restroom, so, and I was just, heard your first question about, you, were you not aware that, that was what we were doing?
When we originally purchased it.
So.
Not aware that it was going to also.
So.
Office space.
So is this a surprise to you tonight?
No, not tonight, cuz we've been talking about it.
Okay.
Since then, we've, we've said, we don't know how much.
We've talked about it when we were doing negotiations in executive session with the library board, and this is going back several months, so, I'm not sure that.
No, I was just saying, originally, when we purchased the building, we did not, it wasn't built, we didn't say we're gonna buy it to house the library and part of the town hall. It was, we are gonna buy this for, to house the library, that was the original purchase. I agree, there's been conversations since then that says, we're not gonna use all that for the library. We're gonna do, we're gonna do something else with the part of that building, which was to move part of town hall over there. So I'm just wanna make sure we're all on the same timeline.
Right, because.
Same understanding of that.
You, you were one of the ones that were pushing for the maintenance to, to combine maintenance, take over maintenance, right? And finance for the school, when they had the deficit, we decided we're gonna take that over. And we were initially purchased that, that piece over on the left side, the bigger piece for, across the street for, um, affordable housing, right? And then we had the opportunity to buy the house and the, and the few acres behind it, or two, right?
Right.
And that house was gonna be, and that was all in executive, where we talked about, we could put finance there, because now we're gonna control finance for the school, but those people had to be somewhere. So at that point in time, we purchased the library, we bought it for a library, you're absolutely correct. Then the light bulb went off and said, we can use that for housing, and, um, we can use a small piece of this over here for, for finance. So, I'm not, I guess I'm confused about where that's.
No, there's, I was, I agree a hundred percent with what you just said.
All right, I just thought you were surprised.
In fact, we were actually looking at, looking at expanding town hall to accommodate those accounts, at one point, we were gonna actually bring somebody in to re-engineer the inside of this building to make more space. And so, I got it, I knew we were looking for more space, and your timeline is accurate. We bought, bought this building as a, a savings. It was, you know, hey, we're gonna save a lot of dollars, taxpayer dollars, to be able to put it in this building. And Paul just agreed to the fact that it was that for the library, but then a light bulb went off, as Paul said, and discussion started about housing part of town hall over there, so.
Okay.
I agree.
I just wanted to make sure the timeline, I just caught the end of it, Dennis, I apologize, I just, I just thought you were surprised about tonight, I'm like, now, the square footage, as far as that goes, we weren't quite sure, but, right?
Yeah.
Right. And it may be, maybe less. I don't know. Peter?
No, I was just gonna say, right from the start of this project, that was my understanding. Matter of fact, when I took the tour, before we purchased the property, we discussed that some of this was gonna be used for, potentially for finding its office space. And that was the first time I went over there.
Okay.
That's all.
All right, thank you, sorry, Ed.
No, that's, that's fine.
Thank you for waiting there patiently.
So, update on the middle school, high school building, first, second, third round of bid packages have all been awarded, you know what those included? The fourth round of bid packages for roofing, interior glass, glazing, uh, gym equipment and bleachers are in front of you tonight for approval. Fifth round of bid packages, which will include millwork, doors, frames and hardware, flooring, toilet partition, stage curtain, and other finishing and specialties are out right now, and they're in the scope revision, um, phase. And then the last and final round, the sixth round of bid packages should be going out soon. Once those come in and come in front of you, GMP's created, and, and it's done, all right? Um, as of right now, we're on budget and on time, still. Um, work on site, site mobilization and groundbreaking is completed. Uh, Gilbane has started taking off topsoil and hauling that over to Huguenois property. The rail bulk excavation started today. Um, since that, we got the DM and the DOT approvals have been received. Uh, concrete trade should be there the end of the week, starting concrete in forms. And, that's pretty much where we are, as, as far as the update of the work, and I think we're in front of the planning board this week, or maybe next week, for one lot, one, sorry, one final last vote on the building for that. And that's the update of the high school, middle school project.
Thank you, uh, Vice President?
I just wanna say, Ed, I walked around the piles where they were hauling material over there, and it was extremely neat.
They, they did.
Very nice.
Thank you, they did a nice job of staging the area over there, they have it all sealed off and everything.
Yep.
They have crushed stone on there, they're washing the tires, they're keeping the dust down. Yeah, it's been a very smooth process, very, very pleased with that, thank you.
Excellent. Okay.
Um, uh, elementary school complex, Bentley is on site. They started, um, setting up construction safety in the tunnels, protocols such as fire extinguishers, CO2 detectors, and signs, they're gonna, we finally got the abatement plan back from the state, SciCom will start abating, once the abating's done, the tanks will be removed, Arden will go in and start doing the mechanical repairs, we're gonna start demoing the courtyards, and that's an update of what's happening over there, so that's just starting to kick off.
Okay, thank you.
That's where we are.
All right, thank you, Mr. Collins.
You're welcome.
Okay. Good job. Okay, school construction, number five. Uh, communication, and there's five of them, Justin Bernard, senior project manager, project management services, Colliers project leaders, in reference to New Middletown Middle High School. A, uh, recommendation to award RTA oh-one, A-two, dash trailers. B, recommendation toward RTA, do you wanna take them one at a time, or? You good?
Do all of them.
RTA zero-seven B roofing. Number C, recommendation toward RTA zero-eight C, interior glazing. D, recommendation toward RTA zero-one-one B, gym equipment and bleachers. And E, recommendation toward ATP zero-zero-three, electrical, exterior storefront, in curtain wall, concrete, and sidewalk, site work, sorry.
Motion to receive said communication.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, Justin?
Thank you very much. Uh, jumping right into the first RTA, uh, which is for the trailers, and um, you may be thinking you've already seen an RTA for trailers, uh, and you would be right.
Yep.
Uh, however, the first RTA for trailers did not include the OPM trailer, um, which, you know, is obviously the most important trailer on the job site. So you sell. So this, uh, this RTA is to, um, add the, uh, OPM trailer in the amount of, uh, forty-two thousand, six hundred, uh, ninety-six dollars, um, which is a estimated cost based on the unit prices provided by William Scotsman, which is, uh, the vendor that provided the, uh, CM trailer. Uh, and, very simple, uh, RTA, this doesn't include any, uh, alternates, does not include any MBA, uh, MBE or WBE participation, uh, and no allowances. Any questions related to the trailer RTA?
Any councils have any questions about the, uh, RTA for the trailer, trailers? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to RTA zero-seven B for the roofing.
Aye.
Colliers and Gilbane are recommending, uh, Patrick J. McKenna Roofing, uh, in the amount of three million, sixty thousand, six hundred dollars. Um, there are, uh, no, um, no allowances, uh, included in this RTA, and there are no applicable alternates, uh, for this RTA. Um, and regarding, um, WBE participation, uh, it includes eleven point six percent WBE participation. Uh, for this RTA, uh, there were three bidders, um, that were, uh, that provided best and final bids. Um, and, you know, the second bidder was, uh, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, more than, McKenna's, uh, bid. Any questions as it relates to roofing?
I have a question.
Charlie?
It just, um, does this include a warranty as well?
Yes.
Or no? Okay, twenty-five year, thirty year, what is it?
Um, I, you know, I forget the, uh, what the specified, uh, warranty was. Uh, typically, it's a minimum of twenty, uh, but yes, there is a, uh, there is a warranty, uh, as specified by the, uh, by the design team, that is included in the RTA.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay.
Okay. Uh, moving on to interior glazing. Uh, this is RTA zero-eight C, and, uh, Colliers and Gilbane are recommending JK Glass Company in the amount of six hundred thirty thousand dollars. Um, and again, this, um, this RTA does not include any allowances, nor are any of the alternates applicable to this, uh, trade contract or RTA. Um, the RTA does include, uh, eleven point nine percent of WBE participation. Um, and there were, uh, actually six bids, um, for this, uh, scope. And, the difference between, uh, the first and second bidders was eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred bucks, yes.
Any questions as it relates to interior glass?
Vice President?
Justin, can you just explain what interior glazing is, because I think it's a cool aspect of the building?
Yeah, so the interior glazing basically handles all of the interior glass in the building, um, this is all of your, um, you know, borrowed lights, it's all of your glass, uh, separating, there's a lot of glass that actually separates some of the common spaces and, uh, walkways, uh, as you're overlooking the, you know, the, uh, the cafeteria. Uh, it also includes all of the light wells, um, except for the skylights, but all of the glass, um, that provides light coming down from the skylights is included in the interior glazing package.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, and the last RTA for the middle high school, uh, today, is for the, uh, gym equipment and bleachers. Uh, Colliers and Gilbane are recommending National Equipment and Facility Solutions, uh, in the amount of one million, sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, and just like the other RTAs, uh, there are no allowances included in this RTA, uh, nor are any of the alternates applicable, uh, to this subcontract. Um, unfortunately, we do not have any MBE or WBE participation, uh, with this RTA. Um, and we did receive, uh, three bids for, uh, for this scope, uh, the second bidder being approximately half a million dollars higher, uh, than the awarded bidder. Uh, and there was another bid for, you know, just over half a million dollars, but it was incomplete, and they did not, uh, participate in any scope reviews to.
I was gonna ask you about that when I saw it, cuz it was listed third, and typically, they're listed in the order of the bid, uh, lowest to highest, and, uh, I was wondering what was going on with that.
Yep, so that was, uh, yeah, the PAPAS companies, they, you know, Gilbane had reached out for, um, you know, to get the rest of their scope.
Why do you think there was a five hundred thousand dollar difference between the two bids, any idea?
You know, that's, that's a tough one, we did, um, I was only able to participate in the awarded, uh, contractor's scope review.
Okay.
I actually missed the one with, um, you know, Robert Lord Company. Um, but, you know, based on my conversations with my colleague, um, both contractors had the exact same scope. Um, and I, I really think it could just be the buying power of National Equipment, uh, versus, um, Robert Lord.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a lot of familiarity with either company, unfortunately.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Dennis?
I, I just thought it was interesting that you guys actually sourced the equipment as well, I mean, everything, you're sourcing everything for the building, but I didn't realize you're even gonna get into the equipment for the sports and all that good stuff, so.
Well, it's not equipment for the sports, you know, we're not providing soccer balls and basketballs, but we are providing basketball hoops and gym divider equipment and things of that nature, so, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, essentially, anything that, uh, you know, is attached to the building.
Attached to the walls, right? Okay.
He, he can't play basketball anyway, he was a wrestler, so.
All right, he's right.
Go ahead.
I can't play basketball either. The height, you know.
I wasn't gonna go there, but go ahead.
Okay, um, so lastly, um, for the middle high school today, we do have, uh, an ATP or an authorization to proceed. Uh, and this is, uh, authorization to proceed, number three. Uh, and this is uh, authorization to proceed number three, which authorizes alternates seven and eight. Uh, alternate seven being uh, to increase the generator um, to um, eight hundred KVA, or excuse me, eight hundred KW. Um, and alternate eight, which um, authorizes changing the windows in the uh, the gym area to hurricane rated to make it uh, a true uh, shelter area. Um, so for this RTA, uh, we have um, for alternate seven, um, we have an award of, or a value of three hundred twenty-six thousand, three hundred eight dollars for Aladdin Electric. And we have two five thousand dollar owner allowances for De Gregorio and JL Marshall. And what those allowances are being held for is to make any changes to the um, to the generator pad for the larger generator. Uh, and then for alternate number eight, we have one hundred forty-eight thousand dollars for Danielson Glass, um, which is again, just to change all of the um, standard windows and curtain wall to hurricane rated um, windows and curtain wall. Uh, so the total ATP, uh, number three for those two alternates is four hundred eighty-four thousand, three hundred eight dollars. Any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question. This is not just specific to this, but you brought up the shelter and it made me think, you know, this is a shelter for the island, correct? So is there any reimbursement? Is there anything that we get from another agency for the fact that we're supplying the shelter for the island?
At this time, the only reimbursement we're getting is through Rhode Island Department of Education.
Is this is specifically a requirement for this to be the shelter, correct, this glazing?
Correct.
Is, so FEMA doesn't offer anything like there? We get any benefit for being the host, I guess, for the island?
I, I have exhausted it. I have pleaded with our federal delegation, our state delegation. Uh, the state agencies, I think Justin has received every, I think I got at this time kind of email. Um, but we've been unsuccessful. However, in this legislative session, which included legislation for a million dollars to do this work and then the, you know, increasing the hotel tax, the hotel tax got approved, so um, you can see my memo and in the resolution, we're proposing that we use half of the money we anticipate from the increase in the hotel tax to pay for this, so we're not using the educational dollars to fund, you know, really a community um, improvement, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
That, that's the one change, but um, I have hit everybody up at least three times. We've applied for grants, uh.
Are we keeping track of like, the additions based just to make this the, the shelter?
Yeah, so that, yeah, that will be segregated out and, but at the end, we will be eligible for the reimbursement from the Department of Education for
Yeah.
fifty-two and a half percent of it, so.
And they'll approve some, an addition like this? Like, so this is specific to the shelter, so is RIDE gonna say, well, no, we, you don't need that? And they're not gonna reimburse us for that?
No, they'll reimburse us up to the amount of the memorandum of agreement. Which if you remember, was, was actually more than the hundred ninety million dollar bond.
We haven't opened up the high school yet, though. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. So we need to move on to number six, which is the resolution of the council in reference to approving the recommendation for Gilbane Building Company to award the subcontracts for trailers, roofing, interior glazing, gym equipment and bleachers, and electrical exterior storefront and curtain wall, concrete and site work, and all expenses recorded in the school department's capital project fund, projects fund, and the town administrator is authorized to notify Gilbane Building Company to award the subcontracts.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Does anybody oppose? Number seven, thank you, Justin. Number seven, communication, there's two of them. From Justin Bernard, basketball player, senior project manager, project management services, Colliers Project Leaders in reference to renovations of the existing Middletown High School ES or elementary school complex.
Okay, thank you.
A, recommendation toward RTA zero one nine, acoustical ceilings. And B, recommendation toward RTA zero twenty-one, low voltage.
Motion received. Said communications.
All in favor? Aye. Justin.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the first one uh, I have for you is the acoustical ceilings, RTA uh, zero nineteen. And uh, Bentley Company and uh, Colliers is recommending Acoustech in uh, the amount of one hundred sixty-four thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars uh, with a subcontractor allowance included for twenty-five thousand dollars for um, removal and reinstallation of the existing ceiling and grid, uh, which is for installation of um, above ceiling utilities in areas that already have acoustical ceilings. Uh, for a total RTA value of one hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars. Um, this uh, RTA does not include any uh, MBE or WBE participation. Um, and there is one applicable alternate, which is alternate three listed under phase one. Uh, and I will know, as I did in the SBC meeting, that uh, there are no allowance, excuse me, there are no alternates that will be uh, performed in phase one and two. Uh, there are actually, any alternates will be performed in phase two and three, which will be next summer and the summer after. Um, but we are recommending that we currently hold that alternate until all alternates are fully priced out, which is expected uh, next month.
Okay. Any questions? I guess my overall question, when you mentioned it's been more favorable in, in previous RTAs um, with the uh, minority business and the women business um, being involved. Are we still on, I mean, we have to meet that.
Yeah, there is.
They are eligible for reimbursement. Are we on track?
Yes. Both Gilbane and Bentley are on track. It just happened that this group of RTAs did not include a lot of uh, MBE, WBE participation.
Okay.
But I have had meetings with both of them, you know, to voice my concerns, because currently um, we don't actually have full, you know, seven and a half percent and for both WBE and MBE participation. Uh, but based on the upcoming RTAs, uh, we are gonna hit those goals.
Excellent. Okay. Any questions on acoustics? Okay.
Okay. And the last one I have for you today is uh, the low voltage uh, RTA, RTA twenty-one. And uh, Bentley Companies and uh, Colliers are recommending a SiNet uh, in the amount of one hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars uh, with a five thousand dollar uh, owner allowance uh, for area of rescue, which is actually related to uh, alternate four, um, the new elevator. The reason we are recommending that we have this um, allowance added to this contract now is if alternate four is um, is approved down the line, we don't have to go back and do any additional paperwork for SiNet. Uh, because this is an owner allowance, which is uh, you know, fully under the control of, you know, Colliers and Middletown, um, to spend any money against that. Um, that, uh, excuse me, that alternate. Um, other than that, there are no other applicable alternates uh, for this RTA. And again, there is no um, MBE or WBE participation for this vendor.
Okay. Any questions? Right. So let's move to, Justin, I guess, I guess I got one question. How many more RTAs are we looking at? Any idea? Between the new, I guess.
Um, a few.
Renovation.
We're looking at um, between, depending if some of these uh, trades are combined, we're looking at between a dozen and fifteen for the elementary school.
Okay.
And for the middle high school, we are looking at another dozen.
Okay. And currently, we're on time?
We're on time and on budget.
We're on budget.
Yeah, we had a lengthy meeting this past Thursday, uh, to look at, at both of those items, as well as where there's opportunities to enhance the project and um, between Justin, myself, uh, Patrick was here and uh, Ed Collins, we're, we're, we're good. So um.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're still favorable.
Yeah, and I think we're still on track for September-ish to do the uh, the uh, guaranteed contract with uh, Gilbane, so.
Uh, as well as Bentley.
As Bentley, so we're.
Okay.
Which is what we talked about at the last meeting.
I think it's important, I, I know the answer, but I just think it's important, it's kind of a loaded question, but to get it out there.
Yeah, no.
Absolutely, yep.
No, we're, we're right on track.
And this is for both projects. We are
Right.
favorable on uh, on the costs and on time.
Okay, so thank you. Let's move on to number eight, the resolution of the council in reference to approving the recommendation for Bentley Companies to award the subcontract for acoustical ceilings and low voltage. And the town administrator is authorized to notify Bentley Companies LLC to award subcontracts.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Is there any more discussion or, discussion or questions? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, one of the things I'd like to do before we go into number nine is, I typically do it at the beginning of the meeting, but I took my post-it note to remind me and stuck it somewhere else. And about fifteen minutes ago, I realized that I didn't do what I was supposed to do um, at the beginning of the meeting, so I'd like to do that now. Um, we've had some, some recent volunteers and some recent um, former employees that used to work for us that passed, recently passed away. So I'd like to uh, have a moment of silence for these folks. And I apologize for not doing it earlier. I, I took my post-it note and stuck it somewhere else and I completely forgot. So I do apologize. So Paul Dutcher, Paul Dutcher was on the Middletown Police Department and uh, I believe is a lifelong Middletown resident. Um, he was the deputy chief uh, for, he worked his way up deputy chief for years and lived on Honeyman Avenue for years. And when I worked at Public Works, I had, at the old police station, when it was over, there were plenty of interactions with uh, Deputy Chief Dutcher, just a, just a, just a gentleman and a, and a nice man and a family man. Uh, he recently passed and then just this past week, we lost uh, Bob Helmbrecht, who was at one time uh, uh, Public Works Director. Um, and you know, I know I went to school with some of his children, they're a couple of years younger than me. Um, and um, you know, Bob is involved in a lot of uh, Little League as well. So want to have a moment of silence for Bob. And then from our library board, uh, we lost um, uh, John Nelson III a little bit ago. So he actually lived behind me where I grew up, him and his family, and I thought it was important that uh, we take a moment to recognize uh, and have a moment of silence for, for those Middletowners and, and the ones that worked for the town and contributed in, in a voluntary way as well. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to number nine, memorandum of town administrator in reference to request to modify change order approval authority for the school construction project.
Motion received said memorandum.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, presently I have the authority to approve change orders up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And what this memorandum outlines and requests is that the council approve that amount. Um, so I would still have the authority to approve up to twenty-five thousand dollars, but between twenty-five thousand and one dollar and a hundred thousand dollars, the change orders could be approved if jointly approved by myself and the school superintendent. Um, the purpose for that is that as we start the project, uh, we want to keep the project going to avoid um, any delays or claims of home office damages. Uh, so uh, based on review of this, um, discussions with the school building committee members, as well as the project manager, um, I am seeking your uh, approval of making this change so that we can keep things on track. I don't anticipate change orders, but in the event that we do get one, uh, we want to act in a timely way so that the project doesn't get delayed, uh, and that decision-making could happen. Um, there is a requirement that we would notify the town council school committee uh, within forty-eight hours of one of these decisions uh, being made. Um, so it, it wouldn't be something that you find out a month later, uh, so it'd be immediate. Uh, the school committee has reviewed, reviewed and taken up this matter. They have approved it, so we're, we're seeking your, your joint approval on the issue.
Okay. Any councils have any questions or concerns? Okay. Vice President.
Motion to approve protocol allowing change orders between twenty-five thousand and one dollar to one hundred thousand dollars to be approved jointly by the town administrator and the school superintendent. Any approval will be reported to both the town council and the school committee within forty-eight hours.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to second. Dennis.
I do have a question. Um, Sean, in regards to the change orders, um, I'm familiar somewhat with those in regards to you run a project, something comes up, it's like, oh shoot, you know, we didn't think of that. So we need to move forward with a, a change order. In the actual project, there's, there's funds that are allocated to offset some of these change orders. Is that fair to say?
So there's an owner's contingency as well as a uh, contractor's contingency. We have, we have two, there's two contingency funds, that's correct.
How much is, how much is in those funds? Do you know offhand?
Roughly, I think it's three point five million dollars in each, three million each? Did Justin leave or?
I don't know. Yeah, he left.
It's roughly, it's in the neighborhood of three million dollars for each.
Yeah, okay, great. And so when you get these, you're gonna be logging them? One, okay, we have one, two, three, four, you know, if we happen to get a number of these and totals four hundred thousand, for example, that'll just be right off the ledger in regards to, out of that account?
Absolutely. Yeah, it is, it's a, it's an extremely formal process and the contractor is gonna want them, um, every, everyone's gonna want those things documented, so um.
I'm sorry, there's a little over ten million dollars in contingencies broken up between contractor and owner.
Okay, excellent.
Yep. Yeah, and that, that is part of the on time, on budget. We've, we've maintained the contingencies since, since the schematic design phase, so that we're not running into an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay. Uh, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Thank you. Let's move on to number ten, public forum. Pursuant to rule twenty-five of the rules of the council, citizens may address the town on one subject only, said subject of substantive town business neither discussed during the regular meeting nor related to job performance or personnel. Citizens may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the council clerk prior to the start of the meeting. All items discussed during this session will not be voted upon, okay? And we do have one, I believe. Mr. Frank?
Lawrence Frank, Ed O'Donnell Road. In June twenty twenty-one, the Middletown Rhode Island Town Council requested proposals from developers for a redevelopment plan for a town-owned fifteen-acre property. In the introduction, the town said this. In addition, the affordable workforce, workforce housing pressures being placed on a quidnic island have significantly, significantly increased in the past year. And the community is interested in exploring if a partnership with an appropriate developer on this particular parcel can provide some form of relief. Relief would include multifamily housing units available for rent or purchase at affordable prices. The current town center proposal does not address affordable and workforce housing, just the opposite. There is no workforce housing. It relegates workforce housing to a local market that is incapable, incapable of meeting that need. What we have been offered is a hotel, market-rated apartments, and a small number of affordable units that require annual salaries of more than eighty thousand dollars per year. This is not workforce housing and does nothing to resolve the extreme shortage of workforce and truly affordable housing. According to the Middletown Affordable Housing Committee, excuse me, according to the town, the Middletown Affordable Housing Committee is a volunteer group tasked with finding ways to help living in the community more financially viable for younger people and elderly and families. The AHC Committee, as do all volunteer committees, take their charges seriously. In June, the Middletown Rhode Island Affordable Housing Committee sent this to the Middletown Town Council. The Middletown Affordable Housing Committee recommends the following. The town of Middletown shall withdraw from consideration with the developers of the proposed town center proposal. The town of Middletown shall withdraw from consideration with the developers of the proposed town center proposal on West Main Road. The town of Middletown should develop a proposal that includes housing with a majority of affordable, low- and moderate-income units and a public park to serve all the residents of Middletown. A recent study supplied to the Middletown Comprehensive Plan Committee noted that 5,500 of the 11,000 individuals who are employed in Middletown earn less than $50,000 per year. A report from Housing Works Rhode Island reports that the average rental cost of a two-bedroom apartment is $26,000 a year. That means that after rent is paid, there's not much left over for food, healthcare, transportation, something that many of us, many of us cannot begin to appreciate having never had to want for these things. The land currently proposed for the town center should be used for housing and a community park, nothing else. It is long past time, it is long past time that the town council finally lives up to the ideal of doing something that is in the best interest of the future of Middletown. Not a short-sighted proposal that has the developers leading the town into a business relationship that does nothing to allow the workers of this town to lead comfortable and fulfilling lives. Thank you."
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
President, there's no one on Zoom.
Is there anyone on Zoom? Okay, excellent. Vice President.
A motion to act as a board of licensed commission.
We have a motion to second to act as a board of licensed commission, all in favor? Okay, acting as a board of licensed commission, number eleven. It's been advertised for public hearing, our butters have been notified. Application of Food Love Market Middletown LLC DBA Food Love Market, 1037 Aquinic Avenue to transfer a class BV liquor license to JT Commons Incorporated. Does business as JT Commons for the 2024-2025 licensing year for use at the same premises, including outdoor patio service.
Motion to open the public hearing.
We have a motion to second to open the public hearing, all in favor? Aye. I looked up and there you are. You must be an expert. Okay.
Good evening.
All right, good evening, David.
Yes, I'm here representing JT Commons Inc. as well as Food Love Market in connection with the transfer of the liquor license for the location at 1037 Aquinic Avenue. We're here to answer any questions that the board might have or the council may have. We've been to the zoning board and received the special use permit, which was subject to certain conditions that are set forth in that decision. So I would think any motion to approve the matter before the council this evening would incorporate by reference those conditions that were set forth in that decision.
Right. So I guess the question I have is it's gone from prepared food to a restaurant?
That's correct.
Full-blown restaurant?
Full-blown restaurant, yeah.
And Food Love, do they currently have outside patio service? I think they did, right?
That's correct.
So nothing's changing there?
That's correct.
Okay. There's no any music involved here that's not part of this, right?
That's not part of this. That'd have to be part of its own separate application.
All right, okay. Any other councils have any other questions? What type of restaurant is it?
I've got Ken Kusan here.
I like food, so I need to know.
If he can come up and explain the concept.
Does you like to pizza at Food Love?
Just your name and address for the record.
Ken Kusan.
How you doing?
With Newport Harbor Corporation. We'll be doing a very casual, family-oriented restaurant, pizza, salads, burgers.
Okay.
Just pretty easygoing.
Good. I think you'll do well as a restaurant there, hopefully.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Trying to keep that pizza going.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Okay, any councils have any questions? All right, thank you so much. Is there any in the audience that, Mrs. Flynn? Just your name and address, Terry.
Terry Flynn, 34 Warren Avenue. I just had some questions on this. I don't recall, did Food Love serve alcohol when they were in business? That's one of my questions. Is this BV, I've forgotten, is that beer and wine or is that full bar? What were the conditions of the approval that the planning board required? And what's the proximity of the new school location border-to-border of that address?
Good question. Because I believe there's a 200-foot rule.
Yes, we are more than 200 feet from the school property. That was checked with the initial application that Food Love made for a BV license at this location. So that was, it's more than 200 feet away. The conditions set forth in the decision, I can read those if the council would like. "One, petitioners shall install and maintain vegetative screening to provide a visual buffer and to mitigate noise impacts from the proposed use on budding residential properties." So there were some residents that had come out during that meeting who live up in the back area and were concerned about having some additional plantings there. "That the petitioners shall ensure compliance with the town's lighting ordinance relative to dark-skY compliance for all lighting, both existing and any future lighting on the subject premises." So there was a floodlight on the rear of the property that was not dark-skY compliant and shining toward the residences. So that condition was put into effect. "Number three, there shall be no outdoor liquor service on the subject premises after 10:00 PM." So that would shut down on the patio by 10:00 PM every day. "And four, outdoor noise shall be monitored by petitioners between the hours of 9:00 PM until closing of the restaurant to ensure compliance with the town's noise ordinance." So those were the conditions that were put on. And a BV license is a full liquor license.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your questions, Mrs. Flynn?
I'm sorry, it did.
It did. Okay, it's just transferring it, so, yep, okay. Anyone else here want to speak on this item? Any councils have any questions? Okay.
There's no one on Zoom.
Just thank you for the friendly reminder, Wendy, there's nobody on Zoom. Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor?
Motion to grant said license subject to no outdoor liquor service after 10:00 PM. "An outdoor noise shall be monitored from 9:00 PM until closing." "And follow all zoning board recommendations and restrictions."
Okay. Is there any conversation? Here and none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Excellent.
Motion to reconvene as the town council.
We have a motion to second to reconvene, all in favor? Aye. And let's move on to the consent calendar. Any councils like to remove any items from the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar in its entirety.
All in favor? Aye, license and permits. Number nineteen, application of JT Commons Incorporated DBA JT Commons 1037 Aquinic Avenue for eviction house license for the 2024-2025 licensing year. This is new.
Motion to grant said license subject to building official fire marshal and board of health approvals.
Is there any questions or conversation? Here and none, all in favor?
Okay.
Okay. I'm recusing and Wendy, you have my form already.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, number thirty, application of Frosty Freeze, 1956, Inc. Doing business as Frosty Freeze, 496 East Main Road for eviction house license for the 2024-2025 licensing year. This is new.
Motion to grant said license subject to building official fire marshal and board of health approvals.
We have a motion to second. Any questions? Do they have any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Let's move on to number twenty-one. Applications, there's four of them from Sweetberry, four special event permits, including mobile catering bar outside from Sweetberry Farm, 915 Mitchell's Lane for the use of the same premises. A Tuesday, July 15, 2025 for live music with mobile catering bar, mobile catering bar outside 6:00 PM. B, Tuesday, July 29, 2025, live music, mobile catering bar outside 6:00 PM. C, Tuesday, August 12, 2025, for live music with mobile catering bar outside at 6:00 PM. And D, Tuesday, August 26, 2025, live music for mobile catering bar outside 6:00 PM.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Is there any conversation or questions, Vice President?
I just have a question. Why isn't there an end time, Wendy?
Why, isn't there an end time?
Yeah.
Well, you have to come up and state your naming address for the record, please. We got to follow certain rules, you know?
Kate Faye, 74 Headley Street in Portsmouth. I present Sweetberry Farm, the live music would be from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM with all participants to be removed off the property by 9:00 PM at the absolute latest.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Any other questions while Kate's up here? Thank you, Kate. Appreciate it. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Thank you. Number twenty-two, application for special event permit from Road Races and Events Incorporated, Warren, Rhode Island, for Newport Road Races, Marathon Road Race, various roads in Middletown, Saturday, April 18, 2026, from 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM, beginning at the Second Beach parking lot.
Motion to grant said special event permit.
Is there any conversation or questions? Dennis?
Hey, Mr. Resident, I was just looking at the permit fee, which is $250, and then the facility use fee of $100. And then it gets into some of the details. Two firefighters, one rescue, one command for six hours. Police department, three officers for a period of time, Public Works. And is, all those fees outside of the application fee, the office permit and so on, is that a wash? In other words, they pay us and we just turn around and pay the workers and it's, there's nothing coming to the town after that?
No, there's an administrative fee on top of it that comes to the town.
And how much is that?
Euro for two.
I want to say it's roughly 20%.
Okay.
I can verify that.
He'll get you that number.
But there is a markup for the details.
Yeah, I'm just looking at, you know, it's great, these folks come to our town, they probably frequent the restaurants, you know, they utilize the roads, you know, and it's great, but I've always said, boy.
Go to Frosty Freeze.
Go to Frosty Freeze, but I always felt like, is it possible for us to get a dollar or runner as well? Like just, where they have a thousand people that are going to run, town gets $1,000 for hosting the event?
We would just need to look at the cost and justify it, but we can look at that if we're recouping the full cost of the event, but right now.
I think the organization would have to kind of justify it. I mean, if we said, hey, look, we're looking for ways to make revenue. And it's just a way that we can participate in this road race where we may get a dollar for a runner. I don't know if they do that for other folks, but I'll leave that up to you, but, I mean, I think, I don't think that's a lot to ask. I'm not sure what they're charging to run in the race, but I'm sure they've got a lot of costs associated to it as well. But I'm just wondering, you know, can they raise their fee $1 and we benefit from it? So just wanted to ask the question.
Yep.
Yeah, I would like to see what other communities do. Yeah. Charlie?
So you bring up a good point there, Councilor Toronto. Are we not charging extra for the police detail and the fire detail that's required? Like, I'm confused on that. There's not a separate fee for that?
It's added on top. There's a fee for the detail and then we add an administrative fee on top of it.
Okay, I don't see that. Okay, I'll find it. Thank you.
Got to be built into the detail rate, I'm sure.
Is there any other questions? You all set?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent.
Sorry.
No, no worries, don't be sorry. Just want to make sure you get your question, if you have any questions, they get answered. So we have a motion to second to grant, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Number twenty-three, application of special event permit from the town of Middletown for the Second Beach Monday Night Music Series, and this is always good. Live music, fire pits and food trucks at Second Beach on Monday, August 4, 2025, Monday, August 11, 2025, Monday, August 18, 2025, and Monday, August 25, 2025, with fireworks on the 25th from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It's a town event and obviously we're requesting to waive all fees.
Motion to change the date for the event August 7, 2025 to August.
You're on 24, we're back at 23.
Where am I?
23.
That's what it says.
Under 20.
It says it under 23.
Sorry, it should be under 24, I apologize.
Motion to grant said special event permit, date changed, not that one either.
Okay, so the motion is to grant the special event permit and waive all fees. Okay, is there any further conversation? Here and none, all in favor? Aye, and I hope as many people attend as they can, because usually it's, do we have the same band on the 25th?
The Ravers, I believe so.
Yeah, excellent. Go on, yes.
I was just going to point out, we have music in the park Monday nights at Paradise Park. It's more acoustic-type music, but also well-attended and we had our first concerts tonight, so hopefully everyone's there. But every Monday during July, the outreach department sponsors.
Right. We have music every Monday through, for two months.
Yes.
July and August. One is Paradise, more acoustical, and the other one's on the beach where we're jamming and having fun.
We're jamming and having beach fun.
All right. Excellent. Okay. All in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Thank you. Number twenty-four, application of special event permit for Middletown Outreach Department for Popsicles in the Park. Craft snacks and activities for kids and families on Thursdays, 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM, starting July 17, 2025, next week through August 14, 2025, at Holland Park. It's a town event and again, the town's asking to request all fees to be waived.
Mr. President, this is the one that they needed to change the dates on the event.
So we're going to go from
August 7.
August 7 to August 14, the 17th is out.
So the 21st. Yep, so July 17 is out, so August 7 to August 21.
Okay, excellent.
Motion to grant said special event permit, date changed and waive all the fees.
I just have a question, Sean. I drive by there quite frequently, going to the farm. And will the playground be completed by then? Because I'm worried about.
That is my understanding as of this morning, that the park will be complete.
That's why they changed the dates, because the playground wasn't going to be ready until then.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, because you don't want a lot of kids there and there could be danger there, so. But that'd be great if that's complete, that'd be fantastic, so. Okay, so we have a motion to seconds, any further questions or conversation? Here and none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Thank you. Other communications, number twenty-five, communication of Cheryl G. Robinson, President of Turning Around Ministries Incorporated in reference to request for support by placing an ad in the souvenir book or making a contribution to TAM, which is Turning Around Ministries.
Motion received said communication and place a half-page ad in the TAM souvenir booklet, which is $75 to be appropriated from the council president's discretionary fund.
We have a motion to second to half-page ad for $75, any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Number twenty-six. I apologize, George, if you're here, but I'm probably going to butcher your last name. Number twenty-six, memorandum of George P. Van Dewenwick, Middletown, for reference to excessive traffic use of the road known as Boulevard, running between Greenan Avenue and Montanelli Avenue, Middletown, Rhode Island.
Motion received said memorandum.
Is George here? He's not. Okay. Sean, we did a traffic calming study up there not too long ago, didn't we?
We did, and I'm going to review that with the Public Works Director.
Okay.
So.
Are we going to communicate that back to George so that?
I can do that.
That would be fantastic. Okay, is there any conversation on this?
I have a question. Is there a place where we could see, like, how many speeding tickets have been issued in town?
I could have the chief generate that report.
Yeah, and, and then also back that up with like we, that goes, that, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't have a traffic court here in town that goes up to Cranston now.
We do.
No, we do. Municipal court.
So it all comes through here, even the speeding tickets?
No.
The speeding ticket's up to a certain number.
Okay. Okay.
Right, the state, the state wants their cut too, Charlie, you know?
No, I understand. I just, uh, I, I think I'm hearing from residents lately. I don't know what you guys are, but just you know, it seems like we have all the police officers we need, but we don't see people getting pulled over a lot, so. That's why I'm asking. I wanna share it with people in the town as well.
Okay, I think that'd be good information to get out there. Absolutely, cause sometimes, a lot of times you don't see it. You know? I know I don't, cause I'm, I'm out of town every day, but it's just one of those things. And then we've asked for that before and, and the numbers kinda surprised us, but we'll find out for sure, okay, this time around.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, the motion is second to receive, all in favor? Aye. Public hearings, number twenty seven. Public hearing's been advertised in order to the town of Middletown. This is the second reading. Public hearing remains open in ordinance amendment to the town code, title fifteen, chapter one fifty two. Entitled zoning code, article twelve, section one, twelve O two. Entitled definitions and section twelve O nine. Entitled exempt signs, window signs, non illuminated. Um, and the planning board recommendation here is on file. Um, Vice President?
Public hearing remains open.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak on the change of the sign ordinance? And Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, they believe this was going from, window signs were going from fifteen percent currently to twenty five percent.
Twenty five percent, so it is, uh, it's
Twenty five percent coverage of that, of that size window, whatever it is.
It is more, it is more beneficial to the small business owners.
Okay.
Best of the first.
Okay, is there anyone here that would like to speak on that? Is there anyone on Zoom, Wendy?
No, there is not.
Excellent, thank you. Do any councils have any questions? Or comments? Charlie?
I completely support this, cause it's an increase, but I wonder if this has been in place fifteen percent. There's a number of businesses here that have been not complying with that for some time. And you know, and then, but then we've kinda gone to other businesses that are newer, that, and I think we've kinda hammered them a little bit on, on theirs, so. You know, the, part of the thing this was, was to give us a reason, you know, the building official said like this was a reason for us to go now to those ones that aren't you know, in accordance with this. But it's been going on, how long has this been the fifteen percent? So, you know, I went around and like, there's a ton of businesses that are covering their entire windows. So i- is there this is just to help our, our zoning officials, I think, go out and measure the area easier, right? And they give a little bit more leadance. But are we going out to like businesses that are already covering all their windows now?
We will. So there'll be a mailer with some information for everybody, so there'll be an educational phase to this, so that every, so that'll go out first. Uh, answer any questions that people have, and then we'll go out to the businesses. So sometimes, and I'll, I'll just use, um, so just covering up your window with a, a screen doesn't count as the advertising. You have to look at the area in which the advertising takes place, so. So it does become more nuanced on the area that, that gets covered, but, but you have the ability to cover your window. You just don't have the ability to put a giant, you know, fishing lure or beer can or, or something like that on it. Um, that, that's what's limited, or your, your logo. It just can't be, you know, Sean Brown Co. It can, it can have like a picture of the beach, but Sean Brown Co. needs to fit within that twenty five percent covering.
Yeah, understood. I mean, I, I, that's kinda what I'm referencing. There's, there's businesses out there that have full advertisements in their windows.
Yep.
And, uh, I think, I think if we're gonna enforce this with one company, we have to enforce it with all of them.
Yep, and then the other piece to this is, um, similar to what we do for sewer, uh, grease separators and looking at the dumpsters and things like that. There, there needs to be a cyclic check where, um, cause, cause what's happened is where we have these problems, so, uh, Peter calls the zoning officer and says Sean is doing some, his, his sign is too big. Uh, so then we get the complaint, well, you guys are, are, are singling me out and really what, what's happening is we're reacting to the complaint. So there, there needs to be like a cycle count, for lack of a better description, to make sure we're going and checking to make sure when we go to the plaza, we go to each one of the businesses once or twice a year and make certain that people are in compliance or not in compliance and, and get away from the, um, you know, the reactionary uh, enforcement that's happening, which creates a lot of hard feelings, um, and, you know, and quite frankly, inequity, cause the only way that it gets enforced is if someone complains, and that's really a bad way for, for everybody, whether it's the the business owner or for the town to do business. So that, that's the other, the other trick to all of this, so. Um, and certainly not having to calculate fifteen percent on the windows is easier for the building official. Looking at a quarter of the window, you can, you can figure that one out pretty easy, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question.
Dennis?
Sean, how, how do we come up with this, whether it's fifteen percent, twenty five percent or fifty percent? What, how do we come up with that number?
Uh, we looked at what nationally it seems to be a, a standard. Um, when we originally looked at it, we looked at what the, uh, the recommended codes are throughout the country. Um, we put that recommendation forward. It went to the planning board, and I, I think as far as whether that's acceptable within our community or not, that we rely on the planning board to help make that recommendation, which is what you know, you, you received a memo from me, you referred it to the planning board, they chew on it and um, I think they look at it relative to, is it what fits in within the community as well as um, yeah, what, what, what works for the businesses. Um, you know, they would have had public hearings and gotten feedback, just, just like you are tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I think it's just something we should continue to work with the businesses. I mean, we've gotta be business friendly, you know, to attract more businesses to this area. And not, you know, pit one against the other, like, oh, well, they got fifty percent and they got a hundred percent. I mean, we've really gotta stay on top of it to make sure everyone's kinda benefiting from this ordinance, complying to it. And measuring whether it's really effective and whether we should be make, giving them the ability to advertise more. To make their business stand out and compete, because we'd need more businesses in Middletown. We need more revenue from the businesses, so. Thank you.
So, in the, in the companies I've worked for, in the current company I work for, retail automotive. So, and I travel different towns, eleven different towns. And most of the signage is different by town. The most recent story opened up down in Dennisport, down the Cape, have these monster windows. And they only allow these little tiny signs that can be taped to the inside. They can't be static on the outside. In other towns, you can, the same thing in Kingston, Mass. And then other towns, you know, they, it's pretty much standard. The, the twenty five percent or so. Um, every once in a while, to Sean's point, Charlie, the way it happens is one business gets upset with another business and then they'll call on them. It's like anything else we do, we put in place, we do the best we can with the manpower we have to, to enforce it. Um, so. But I hear what you're saying, but it needs to be fair across the board. Um, and it is, for the most part, until somebody does it and gets away with it, gets away with it, gets away with it, until somebody points it out. Cause they're not gonna catch every little thing, so I think it's reasonable.
Yeah, and I, I, you know, and I know there's, the gentleman that complained about it, but the, the other problem, you know, and I think this was Chris trying to be, to help people was, um, we have, in the ordinance, you have twenty one days to basically you know, put up the, the sock man that says, hey, we're open and the feather flags and all of that, and you know, Chris, Chris let those deadlines slide to help the business out, but then the next thing you know, now it's well, I've had him out there for a month. I don't wanna take him down, or, you know, and that becomes like the next problem, so. You know, it's, it's, Chris, Chris tries to give, um, the benefit of the doubt to the businesses and, and, you know, as, as I think we all do. I mean, I think that's what we did in this case. It's just, um, but at some point, we're responsible for enforcing the ordinance, and again, um, I think the planning board does a pretty good job of trying to make recommendations to the council on, especially on the side ordinance. I mean, I think the sign ordinance has been, um, a pet peeve of the town since I've been here in two thousand.
Yep.
I think one of the most famous Newport Daily News pictures is a picture of the West Main Road when they looked down and all you have is telephone poles and, and lollipop signs and every, every imaginable size and color, so.
Okay.
I think this cleans it up. I bet.
All right, is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this? Any of those new zoning board members? No? Okay, excellent.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second to close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye.
Motion adopts said ordinance on its second reading.
Second.
The motion is second to adopt the said ordinance in second reading. Is there any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Number twenty eight. Public hearing's been advertised. Public hearing remains open in order to the town of Middletown. This is also the second reading in ordinance and amendment to the town code. Title fifteen, chapter one fifty two, entitled zoning code. Article seven supplemental regulations, six and seven, twenty nine, temporary storage units, and the plan, planning board recommendation is on file for this one.
Public hearing remains open.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this ordinance for temporary storage units? Peter, do you want to mind just giving a briefing for the
Yeah, so this
new zoning board members, uh?
This was a ordinance that, um, once again, I think came, uh, uh, through as a result of some complaints that had come, people who were renting storage units, parking them at various spots on their property, uh, and just leaving them there for months and years at a time. Uh, and so the idea here was to try to, based on, um, what some other communities locally had done, to just try to have a permit system where you know, if you're moving or you're doing a project or something, you need to have a storage unit on for a specific period of time. If you can get a permit, you know, it's not allowed within the front yard setback and those kind of things to provide a little bit of relief for the neighbors. Um, the zoning officer can extend the permit one time, uh, but, um, it just, once again, these things were proliferating through town and residential neighborhoods and being a bit of a light, um, on certain areas. And so the idea was to you know, get their, get our arms around that to a certain extent and allow the town to deal with that issue. Um, does not include storage units that would be part of an active construction site, so if you're building a, a house or you're building a school, you've got a storage unit or facility like that, that's allowed to remain there as part of that project. When that project's done, then it goes away.
And the building inspector has some discretion to extend sixty days, I think?
He does.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right, excellent. Okay, is there any, anyone else here that would like to speak on this? Is there anyone on Zoom? Any councils have any questions? Yes, Christopher. You need, you need to, you need to follow the rules. And you need to state your naming address for the record, please.
Christopher Rowe, one seventy seven Chases Lane. Just a quick question on that. Does that include pods that people typically put in their driveway when they're getting ready to move and it's gonna be a month or so?
Yes. Yes, I would.
So there's a ball into getting
I believe the timeframe that you're allowed to maintain it is like a hundred and eighty days. Uh, I don't have it here.
Six months.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comment? Dennis?
A little bit outside of this, but I did go around, wanna look to see how many pods I could identify, driving around seeing, you know, cause I, they haven't jumped out to me, and so I just wanted to drive around, but I also saw as I was driving cars, broken down cars that had been sitting, you know, in a driveway for a period of time. You can tell they're not operable. Or a, a camper that might be along the side of a house that's, you know, it's, hasn't seen it, I mean, it looks like it can't move or things along those lines. Do we have ordinances around those things?
Ordinances on, um,
Boats, trailers.
Boats, trailers, unregistered vehicles. We do have ordinances addressing all those things.
Okay. Do we ever notify people about that to say, hey, this, you know?
Once again, if
this camper should be moved or this car's been sitting here rusting for a period of time.
Aware of it, and as Sean mentioned with the guard of signs, lots of times we become aware of it because uh, either Chris is driving around and sees it, or more often somebody calls and says, hey, my neighbor's got six junk cars in his backyard and I'm tired of looking at them.
So I gave one to the building department last week. I, you know, it's a car that I had seen riding my bike. It's got four flat tires, it's on the road.
Yeah.
It, it's clearly not going anywhere.
I just don't think people wanna call, call on the neighbor to say, hey, you know, the car's, you know, geez, you know. Where, if we're enforcing it, cause we know the ordinance and we're not, you know, we're not gonna go in and say, well, your neighbor called and, you know, you gotta move that. You know, it's really like, no, we're here because there's an ordinance and we're here to enforce that, so. More proactive, not waiting for someone to have to drop a dime.
Yeah, if, if, if they see them, then they're, they're taking enforcement action, but we do have uh, ordinances on the book that deal with all those things.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, these people have to live next to each other, so if it was me, I, I'd call my neighbor or go over and see him or her and say, hey, you know, what's the deal there? And maybe they have a good explanation, maybe there's a timeframe they give you, or who knows? I mean, to me, that's the right thing to do, but, and if they don't, then call. But to me, that, that's what I would do, but that's, you know.
I just think sometimes we, we put it in the, in the residence, you guys fix it, get, you know, figure it out, where we have ordinances that we have hired people to enforce these things. I think they should go out and enforce them and not leave it up to the, the resident to report it.
Again.
The manpower.
That's what the ordinance is for, but you can only, you only have so much manpower, you know?
Yep.
We put things in place that we, we know we can't enforce. But the intentions on it are good. You have to sometimes, something like this.
I, I think there, there always seems to be, and I, you know, Wendy can answer this really well, and I think give examples, but we are always bringing someone into municipal court with debris and stuff on their property. Um, there, there's, that, there's always something active going on, so we are proactive. We do take actions to get, it's not only vehicles, but other, other debris and, um, and, and it follows through to the municipal court, and that that is something I think we, we are more active in, quite frankly, than it, than it had been, you know, five, ten years ago, so. But I'll, I'll let Wendy.
That is correct. We do have.
Let's get back to the pods, so.
No, no, that's good. Thank you.
On pods in this ordinance? Anyone else? And anybody on Zoom? No? Okay, Vice President?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
The motion is second to close, all in favor? Aye.
Motion to adopt said ordinance on its second reading.
The motion is second to adopt. Is there any further conversation? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Town Council Business, number twenty nine. Memorandum for myself. Uh, in reference to Little Creek Lane.
Motion received said memorandum.
Second.
The motion is second to receive, all in favor? Aye, so my neighbor, uh, Mr. Hoffman, uh, contacted me and, uh, he owns a couple of properties and one of them's on Little Creek. And he had some questions about whether it's a private or a public road.
Sure.
So I asked him to, like we have in the past when we did Buena Vista. Um, if the council would be favorable to have the solicitor research that, but Mr. Hoffman.
Brian Hoffman, uh, two eighty nine Prospect Avenue.
Follows the rules.
I do, thank you.
Thank you.
And I was listening on Zoom, so I was that one person, I guess. Uh, so this came up because I have a property on fourteen Little Creek that I plan on, uh, building a house at, that I'm going to be, you know, living at. And the road itself is, uh, you know, not cared for by the town. It is plowed once a storm, though. And, uh, you know, I did a little bit of research as I'm looking to invest significantly at the end of the street on my, uh, nine acre farm. And what I found, can I bring something up for people to see?
So what I found is Town clerk actually has a Town clerk actually has a map that shows all the public streets, sorry, town owned trees.
Thank you.
And
Why don't you share those and then you
Parky owned streets, this, this is only printed one key, but that's the key. So according to the town.
The key would have been to print seven of them. I'm just kidding, go ahead.
Frosty Freeze is the key, from what I hear. Uh, so, according to the key, this is a town owned road. Uh, I went to the public works department. I mentioned, hey, town chose it as a town owned road. Uh, his response was, we don't have a list officially, so you have to get the town, uh, council to tell me what to do. So that's why I'm here to confirm that it's a town road. And, uh, it's the map that's right, like, three doors that way.
So, if you're not familiar with the property, it's Jimmy Peckham's old, old place, and that's the road right off of Whopping, it's before you get to Peckham, so as you come down the hill. Um, you guys have any questions or comments? No.
Is there, well, I have a question.
Charlie?
Is there, what's the request, I guess?
The request is to request a solicitor, like we did with the guy.
Actually, uh, Paul, to be clear, my request is to confirm it's a town road first. Actually, uh, Paul, to be clear, my request is to confirm it's a town road first. So
He has to research that.
Oh, well, that's the, that's the question.
Find that out.
Yeah, okay. So that's the question. If it has to be researched or based on, you know, just the map itself, maybe it's just a town road.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure the map, when you, when you showed me that map and it showed that green and it showed Buena Vista green, and Buena Vista's a private road, so I'm not sure what the legend is of the color.
So the question is, would be, and we'll, we'll, and I, I spoke with Mr. Hoffman on the phone last week and said, you know, if, the, the thing to do would be to come to the, talk to the town, come to the council and see if they want me to do the research for this. Uh, but, so one of the things we'd look at is whether it's a public road or a private road, and then if it's determined that the public has a right to use that road, whether it's a, a town accepted road, is it, is it a road that the town has accepted the responsibility to maintain? Because there are, you know, there are public roads that are clearly town responsibility. There are private roads that are clearly not, then there are other roads that are, that fall somewhere in between. They may be, the public may have access to them, but the town, uh, does not maintain them other than, you know, end of the storm for safety purposes. So, uh, but we would do a title search and then report back what we find.
Okay. Yeah. You guys good with that? You okay with that? Okay, do we need a motion for that, or?
Tell me to do it now, fine.
What emotion?
I make a motion to direct the solicitor to look into the public or private use of Little Creek Lane, second.
And on that, if it does turn out to be town, obviously we figure that out. If it ends up being private, do you make a determination of who actually owns it? Because as the owner of the nine acre farm, I, I have no idea if not the town, which is what the town advertises as owning it, who owns the road?
When you purchased the property, Brian, what, what did they tell, they had to tell you something, right?
Sure, I have all the deeds, uh, for all the properties on the street, and they all say the deed, the properties end at Little Creek, a thirty-seven foot wide by a hundred and eighty-three foot, uh, property and just
Sure.
Plan of Little Creek, and they printed one of these, so you guys have to share.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna do. Uh, we have a motion to second to direct the solicitor to see if Little Creek's private or public. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody oppose? Uh, Peter, from a time perspective, um, I know you have a lot going on. What, what are you thinking?
Um, but I've gotta get someone to, to run, to do the title search first, get, then get all the material to me to review. Um, and so it's, it's probably, uh, probably at least a couple of weeks.
Okay, so the meeting in August?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, certainly.
Only have one meeting, Brian, in July.
I would certainly try to get back to, um,
What's the date in August?
Back to Sean and, and I may, I may contact Mr. Hoffman.
If you have any questions, I'm available.
Wendy, what's the meeting date in August that we're meeting?
The fourth.
The fourth, okay.
Great. All right, thank you.
We'll see you then.
Will do.
And if it's not ready, I'm sure we'll contact you. All right? Okay, thank you. Let's move on to town administrator. Number thirty, memorandum of town administrator, reference to recommendation to award contracts to Crossman Engineering, sanitary sewer system evaluation, or the famous SSES, uh, wastewater facilities plan update and operations and maintenance manual update.
Motion received said memorandum.
Second.
The motion is second to receive, all in favor? Aye, and let's move into the resolution. We'll have discussion. Number thirty-one, resolution of the council in reference to award of contract to Crossman Engineering for the sanitary sewer system evaluation survey, funding from the sewer fund, and authorizing the finance director to execute the contract on behalf of the town.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Mr. Brown?
Uh, I'm joined with the public works director and our town engineer, who I think this is inaugural meeting with the council, uh, to review this item. Uh, so this was part of the budget that was adopted by the town this year. Um, and what we're looking at is establishing or reestablishing our foundation and how how we rate the condition of our sewer system where we want to prioritize spending as well as how we operate it. This is required, uh, from a best management practice standpoint. It's also a regulatory requirement required by RIDE. Uh, I'm sorry, DEM. Uh, it's also an issue that comes up with our relationship with the city of Newport. City of Newport treats our wastewater, so they want to make certain that we're operating our, our system correctly, uh, and there's concern that there's, uh, I N I issues, inflow and infiltration. Uh, the first part of the study is a sanitary, uh, sewer evaluation study. The total cost of that work is one hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. Primarily what we're looking at is putting meters into the system and trying to measure wet, uh, dry weather versus wet water flows within the system, uh, to determine where, where there may be issues. Uh, so it's an investigative activity. So that, that's the first study, uh, first thing that we're looking at. Uh, the second set of work is a facilities plan. Uh, total cost of that contract is a hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And the facilities plan is basically an evaluation of the system condition. Uh, we look at our compliance, uh, to operating the system and also growth in capital that are required. So that, that document, uh, outlines the system and where, where the issues are, where we're going. Uh, the last document or study that we're looking at is, uh, has a total cost of forty-nine thousand dollars. That's updating our operations and maintenance manual. And that manual is necessary to help us safely and effectively operate the sewer system. So those are the three documents. The total cost of the contract is four hundred and sixteen thousand, eighty dollars. Uh, Crossman Engineer, uh, we, we work with them from a bid. Uh, they're our own call engineering company. They have familiarity not only with the town's operations, uh, sewer operations, but also has recently done work looking at growth within the community. Uh, they did a build out study for the planning board and town council. Uh, so Steve Cabral, who's the principal, uh, of that firm, really, I think, has a strong understanding of, uh, not only how the town operates, but also how it is growing, developing over time. Uh, he's also familiar, because he helped us with grant applications, you know, looking at growth that's happening because of the Navy, uh, over at Naval Station Newport. So, uh, very, uh, very familiar with the town of Middletown, and, uh, we've received good work from him. So I don't know if John or Bob wanna ask any que, uh, add anything, or if you have any questions for them. Uh, but it's the staff's recommendation to award the three contracts to Crossman Engineering.
Okay. So we'll take one, one resolution at a time. Um, any, any questions? And that's showing the funding, obviously, from the sewer fund that's budgeted.
Yes, it is in the budget.
Just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
You wanna talk about it as a whole?
No, we'll take one at a time.
Good.
Um, that way we, we stay focused on, we're not all over the place. So we have a motion and a second to pass said resolution on thirty-one. Uh, is there any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor? Uh, hang on? No, go ahead.
Yeah. Um,
Don't be sorry if you have a question.
No, I'm looking at it, and I guess my first question is, is this something we have to do right now? Are we doing this as a precautionary thing? To get a better understanding of it? Or is this something we have to do now?
So it, it needs to be updated. We haven't done it in over ten years. Typically, the cycle would be five year, five year increments. Uh, the second issue we'd wanna look at doing it now is that for the purposes of capital planning, we don't have a current assessment of where the inflow and infiltration is in the system right now. So if you're, if you're doing a project, it may not be your first priority. So you, you may be maybe spending your money in the wrong place. Uh, the third issue is in our negotiations with the city of Newport. They are seeing increases in the amount of flow we send during rain events. So we're unnecessarily paying for capital improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, to the long morph pump station, uh, as well as operations to the plant. So if we're able to identify an area within our system that we can eliminate flow, that would decrease our proportional use of the wastewater treatment plant in Newport, uh, and, and reduce our costs overall. Uh, Newport is looking at these numbers also, and they're concerned. Uh, the plant does operate, uh, at a at a high level during a rainstorm. Uh, so there's, there's operational challenges, and as a partner to that, the expectation is that we are being proactive in, in operating our system and maintaining it from a capital perspective.
So I I know we, I mean, we've been working on our sewer system ever since I've been up on the council and slip lining sewer lines and looking at pump stations and all that. I kind of would assume that we might have all this information, but you're saying we gotta spend four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to give us answers?
No, so for measuring the inflow and infiltration, it's one hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred dollars.
Okay. I, and again, I'm not a hundred percent on all the projects and how they tie with each other, but the number I heard was four hundred over.
Well, it's all, all of them together.
Right.
So we did, we did, um, an SSES one and an SSES two, uh, probably fifteen years ago, Sean.
Jerry was here, so.
Yeah, so when we did that, um, you know, we were, we were paying the rate users and the town was paying, uh, the city of Newport a lot of extra money for rain events where rain is getting into our current sewer system where in the fifties, when they built the sewer system, a lot of the pipes were Orangeburg pipes. And, um, you know, those crack over time. It's like, kinda like a clay pot, so to speak, probably a little thicker, but um, over years, they deteriorated. That was the thing they used back in the fifties when they started putting in sewer systems here in Middletown. And so there was two ways to fix that. If one is crushed, they'd go in and camera it, and he roots get into him, stuff like that. Or if it's not crushed, you could go and slip line it. And so we took, we took two avenues. If you go down, if you start, if you come up Valley Road and you start, you see the manholes raised high, those are sewer manholes because they used to be underwater. So all that inflow and infiltration was getting in there. And you know, we're paying a lot of, um, overflows from Wave Avenue, that's where ninety percent of our sewer goes. And so uh, and big rain events would overflow into the, into the Atlantic, into the beach. So that was one of the things we did. The other thing we did, we did at the time, we did a lot of smoke tests because a lot of people were tied into um, their, their sewer, their drainage was tied into the sewer system. And some of the sewer was tied into the drainage down in, in your area. That was famed, not that you did it, I'm just saying, when I worked for Public Works, it was famous for that. So they would go in and they'd put smoke in these pipes and it'd come out out of your downspouts in your gutter, and you would know, we would know where the, we'd identify where the issues are. Because people aren't gonna come forward and go, hey, it's gonna cost me a lot of money to get this thing fixed. I'm not gonna do that. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a cat and mouse game. So we did a lot of that, and we reduced a lot of the inflow and infiltration at the time. We put millions of dollars uh, in, under the, in the ground. Um, and I'm glad we did that. But now this is another phase to that, Dennis, where they're starting to see more increase in, you know, um, at the, all our stuff goes to the treatment plant, and we're also responsibility, responsible for as part of that contract with Newport, uh, some of their capital improvements and some of their pump stations, Wellington's one of them. So, I mean, we've replaced a big interceptor that goes up the hill years back, goes up my Antonomi, so I don't know, Bob, you're shaking your head and I, I yeah, I'm so a lot of that, it's, it's important we do this. I know it's a lot of money, but we're either gonna pay for it on the back end, or we're gonna pay for it upfront and save money in the long run. So it's only gonna get more expensive. So I, I think, think
Yeah.
You know, that's one way to look at it, but I, I, I understand your concern, not knowing all the background on it and and, and appreciation for it. So especially if, as we move to hopefully improve Cottington, if we can get some of that money to do that, um, and, and shift more of that ninety percent uh, of, of the sewer in the town that goes to Wave Avenue from crazy West Main Road, and it goes crazy routes all the way down that way, to simply send it to Cottington certain areas. I don't know the exact which goes where, but ninety percent of it goes to Wave. So I think it's a step in the right direction. No one wants to spend the money, but you know, it's, it's, you're either gonna spend it now or you're gonna spend more later.
Yep. So, and I appreciate that, Paul. The, um, what I liked, what you said in regards to this will help us save money in the long run, so that would be good to ju, you know, when that happens, and we say, hey, we did this study for X and we saved three hundred thousand dollars, so well, well spent money. So hopefully we can justify that. I'm looking at the CIP, and what line item is that coming out of?
The plan is coming from the cap, uh, the operating budget, I believe. Um, I'd, I'd have to look at it. I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, I'm looking at the CIP, and it's wastewater facility plan and sewer manual update.
Okay.
Is that what that is?
I, I don't have it in front of me, so you're gonna have to tell me.
Okay.
But they were included in the
That was, that was, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand. And then there's SSES Phase One Scope and Budget. That's two hundred and five. And then there's Beacon, and then there's Sewer Main Replacement on the Boulevard and Sewer Rate Analysis.
Right.
So I'm just curious where
Yeah, so
coming out of the sewer.
He doesn't have that in front of him right now, but if you get, if you can get Dennis that answer as to exactly what line it is in the capital fund, or wherever it's being funded from, but it's, the rate use, rate users pay for it.
Sure, that's fine.
And we had built into that, uh, I think it was two thousand and eight, we built in, um, a capital improvement fund just for sewer.
So the old ordinance, the original town ordinance did not allow us to have a, a capital improvement fund or, or any fund balance. You basically operate the fund at zero every year. So we did, we did change that.
Yeah. Just like our regular capital improvement fund, Bill Flynn started that in two thousand and three when he's the council president. And it was, it started a million dollars, and it goes up every, if the budget goes up three percent, then it goes up three percent. That's how we were able to try and fund some of our capital because it wasn't sustainable. When I was the council president, two thousand and eight, we did the same thing because it just wasn't sustainable. And we had a lot of these inflow and infiltration projects going on. So that's kind of what we did, what we did. And I can explain a whole class on slip lining, but we won't go there tonight. And it's really cool, so it's like taking a sock inside out. But anyway, with force hot air. But anyway, let's, um, let's stick to this. Uh, any other questions on thirty-one? We have a motion to second approve said, uh, resolution. Um, all in favor? Aye, anybody oppose? Number thirty-two is the resolution of the council in reference to award of contract to Crossman Engineering for the wastewater facilities plan update, funding from the sewer fund, and authorizing the finance director to execute the contract on behalf of the town.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Any questions on this one? Here and none, all in favor? Aye, and number thirty-three, resolution of the council in reference to award of contract to Crossman Engineering for the operations and maintenance manual update, funding from the sewer fund, uh, and authorizing the finance director to execute the contract on behalf of the town.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Any conversation or questions on this? Here and none, all in favor? Aye. Let's get away from that conversation and let's focus towards pickleball. Number thirty-four, memorandum of town administrator in reference to proposal for engineering services for pickle, for the pickleball facility.
Motion to receive said memorandum.
Second.
We have a motion to second to receive, all in favor? Aye, and let's move to thirty-five, where we'll have discussion on the resolution of the council in reference to award of contract to Crossman Engineering for engineering services for four pickleball courts, funding from the general fund, and authorizing the town, and authorizing the finance director, I apologize, to execute the contract.
Motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
We have a motion to second to pass. Sean?
So we've long talked about the pickleball courts. Uh, we held that project up because we were concerned about funding related to the school project, sort of understanding where we were from a, a funding standpoint. And earlier tonight, we talked about that we had a very good feeling that we're on time on budget with the school. So looking at the availability of money that we have in our open space and recreation bonds, I was bringing this back to the council, uh, to suggest that we engage Crossman Engineering to design, uh, using the John Clark property for pickleball courts on that property that we would be able to use, uh, to, to provide pickleball to the community. Uh, Crossman is familiar with the project. Again, uh, they're, they're our consulting engineer. While Steve was acting as town engineer, we While Steve was acting as town engineer, we had put together a grant application, a DEM, trying to get money to help pay for this with, in partnership with the YMCA. What we're asking for tonight is your authority for him to pick up that project and move it forward. Some of the differences, originally, we were looking at six courts instead of four. We're going with four to 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 provide, we we sort of go into these projects and try to pick up every square feet of the project. But one of the things that we need to do here is preserve the John Clark monument that's out there. So that that's an element that would need to be part of this development. And also, just just to provide something that is more, has better aesthetics for the site. There, there's a nice stone wall, there's some mature trees, things like that. So it's a good location for pickleball. It was received well last time we talked about it. There's no residential areas near it. We had received correspondence from Bank Newport. They were excited about it to have a feature like that in the corporate park. So what we're looking for is the authority, the eighty five hundred dollars to prepare a plan for the council's review and the bid documents to get this out and get the courts built.
Vice President.
Charlie too. I'd just like to say that I went on that tour with Sean and Steve and the guy from the Y and whoever else it was. And we walked the whole thing, talked about it, parking, you know, they have some more across the street, Bank of Newport. Like you, I go by Howland School all the time, and it is jam constantly, people playing pickleball outside. I know we have a new place inside where the movie theater was, but there's a lot of people still playing pickleball. And I think it was a great idea then, and it's still a great idea now, so I'm all, all for it.
Okay, Charlie.
Do we have a ballpark of what the cost will be for the whole courts?
No, I'll come back with that once, once it's fully designed.
And if this goes forward and we build this, does that mean Howland Park now can return? Also, I mean, it, and I, I agree with you, Mr. Vice President, there are pickleball players there all the time, which kind of pushes other people, they're not using the park, including people wanting to play hockey, and even sometimes basketball. I've seen them move it over to the basketball court sometimes, too. So does that mean Howland Park, maybe we could return, you know, back to, people can play pickup hockey out there again? Or is it, we still going to maintain a pickleball court out there as well?
That would be up to the council, but I'd suggest trying to restore Howland Park to some of the more traditional uses that it's, it's known for.
Okay.
So Sean, I guess my question on this is, it would be first come, first served? Whoever shows up? Or is there a scheduling? Does somebody do scheduling? Will they have tournaments? I mean, who, how would the town handle all that stuff?
So at a base level, it would be like the tennis courts, it's first come, first served. But I think communities have learned that you need to put rules around this because people love pickleball. I have a meeting tomorrow with Mike Miller from the YMCA to see how, how we can work together to put a system together, maybe using the Y's reservation system. I, we'll find that balance, but we, when I come back with a plan, I think I need to come back with a set of rules or an operating plan for it, do you consider? So that when it comes forward, the full, you have a full picture of how this, this facility would operate.
Okay. All right, fair enough. Dennis.
Sean, I know we didn't get around to it today in regards to project updates. Are we, would these go into that as project updates? So once we, like, we approve the, this product, you know, this.
Yes, so we're working with the department heads to get the projects that were included in the budget included in the project update, so this will be added.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, is there any further questions or comments about these pickleball, potential pickleball courts? Potential.
Yep, just, and just something that I just saw in the planner's office, and this is something we'll look at, too, is there's actually people that are sort of similar, like similar to paddle tennis, where they have courts that you just buy off the truck, and it's, you know, they have steel, you know, footings that go on the ground. And basically, it, you just assemble the court. It's elevated, so you're not doing all of the earthwork. Just a different, we'll, we'll look at it to see if that's a viable option. But there, there's a number, you know, rather than just, are you going to use asphalt or pretension concrete? But there's another solution where you're, you have like an elevated court that's made out of steel that supposedly provides a very similar playing surface, which may in fact be less costly and because it has like an astroturf on it, you know, might be a better playing surface. So we'll, we'll look at those options, too, before we bring something back.
Okay.
Might, it might require less, you know, infrastructure from a stormwater standpoint, you know what I mean? Since it's, it's elevated, there, there might be an advantage there.
Yep, okay. But I agree with, with Charlie about Howland Park because the park was intended to be a passive park.
Correct.
You know? With the basketball, you know, you go by very seldom. I used to see kids playing basketball there, not, not every day, but more often than what I see them now. And, you know, the, the guys would get together on Sundays and Saturdays or whatever and play street ball, street hockey, I guess. And, you know, now with pickleball there, which was good that we're able to do that, but when that playground gets reassembled, we're going to have a problem over there. So that's just my opinion.
Yeah. Can I add to that, too? I think, and I think to Sean's point, it's important to designate pickleball courts because all the conflicts you hear about, and my son, he'll go to the YMCA sometimes, and he gets yelled at to get off the court because his pickleballer's command. No offense to any pickleballers out there, but they tend to be a little more aggressive when it comes to a shared court. So, thank you.
Okay. Any further conversations? Here and none, all in favor? Aye. Anybody oppose? Motion carries. Number thirty six is the memorandum finance director in reference to architectural service for the library renovation right behind us here at one ten Enterprise Center.
Motion receives said memorandum.
Second.
But motion to second to receive, all in favor? Aye. And number thirty seven, we'll have discussion, resolution of the council in reference to approved recommendation for Odens, Odenzello Architect, funding from bond proceeds and all expenses will be recorded in the town's capital projects fund for the town's general fund, the town's general fund. Fund balance will fund all invoices prior to bond issuance, and town administrators authorized to execute agreements on behalf of the town.
Mash, motion to pass said resolution.
Second.
Okay, Sean. What about the renovation for the library behind us and hiring the architect to do that?
Correct. And, and Don, Don Moran is here, who's the chair of the library building committee, and I'm sure Don will add something to what I miss. This is a recommendation from the committee, as well as the administration, to hire Odenzello Architecture out of Boston, Massachusetts, to, to be the architect of record for the renovation of the library building. The total cost is six hundred and sixty one thousand six hundred and ten dollars. We have an agreement outlined, completed with, with terms that the our project manager, as well as our consulting attorney, has reviewed to make sure that we're in line. We did, there were six, six, six proposals received. We interviewed three, and Odenzello was the architect that we picked. Small, small firm out of Boston, really strong design aesthetic. I, I think it, it will complement what we're doing with the school building. I think it's a, they'll, they will design something that will make the town proud of the library. It will be a, I think it'll be a really special experience with the, the work that they'll do. And they are aware of our timeline, as well as our project budget right now, and they seem very excited to get started. So once you execute, you know, approve this, we'll execute the agreement. And I believe that we're already trying to schedule meetings for this week to start the schematic designs based on the building programs that they have. And I, Don.
Don, do you have any, anything you'd like to add to this? That's unusual.
Don't push him.
I mean.
Push him.
Yeah.
You do a great job explaining it, so.
Don does a great job. We're, we're lucky to have him.
What's your name and address?
Don Moran, five forty nine Turner Road, Chair of the Library Building Committee. No, we, as Sean said, we had six proposals. We rated and ranked them. Odenzello was number one. We interviewed one, two, and three. We had actually a good discussion. There were a couple, there was another architectural firm that was, that we could have gone with as well. But we felt comfortable with them. They've done many libraries, mostly in Massachusetts. This will be the first Rhode Island one. Our library consultant, Lawrence Dara, is an architect and a librarian. She's worked primarily in Massachusetts, speaks very highly of this firm. She's had a lot of experience with them. They listen, they'll give you what you want. So we all felt comfortable with them, and we're going to hit the ground running. Our OPM is here as well. They'll be setting up weekly meetings with, this is Downs, JJ, you've met Jay, I think, once, right?
Yes.
Okay. So they'll be setting up weekly meetings to monitor the project with the architect, and we'll start the design, as Sean said, immediately. Hopefully have our first schematic design in September.
Has everyone met the project manager, Jay?
No.
No, Jay, you want to just, coming up and, that'd be great, put the name, face to the name and, and who you work for and what.
John Edwards, sixty nine South Avenue, Tiverton. I work, I'm a project manager for Downs Construction. We are your owner's project manager.
Okay, excellent. Any questions?
I have a question. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Looking forward to a good project.
Going to be a great project, actually.
Right. So do you have a, did we provide a number, or do you have a number in regards to what you're working with, that what we want to invest? Like, when you're designing, if I go to design a house, you know, they're not going to come design a house for, you know, a ten million dollar home when I can only afford a million dollar home. So what, what would, you know, do you have a budget you're working within, or?
We have a number that we have been using with the contractors and the architects as an all in number.
Okay. And what's that number?
Seven million dollars.
Seven million. Okay. That's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, does anyone have any questions for Jay?
He took mine.
Okay. Thank you for coming to me.
Thank you, Council President.
Don, thank you. Is there any further questions or comments about getting this project going with the architect? And, and Sean, can you mind speaking to the timeline of this project so everyone is kind of on the same page as far as the timeline and what we're looking to do? We meet pretty, the library board meets pretty regularly, the library building committee, I should say.
I'm going to ask Jay to come back up, just because I'm going to give the infamous, we want to be done in a year. We want to be aggressive and meet the timeline for the West Main Road project.
If you wouldn't mind kind of just giving a timeline so everyone understands and, you know, everyone's on the same page, and someone doesn't say, well, I didn't know this, or I didn't know that. And that's, that may happen from time to time, but just, just a rough timeline, looking to do it. I think it's a pretty aggressive timeline, which I'm in favor of.
It's, it's a very aggressive timeline, but it's also very doable. We've been finding with a lot of the architecture firms we've been dealing with out of Providence on the schools and the rec centers, that we're blending the schematic design with the design development, and actually speeds up the process. And this is an interior fit up. There's no, like, structural work that has to be done on the building. There's no outside work that has to be done on the building. So it's really contained within the building. So I think it should be fairly simple for them to come up with a really good design for the town. We'll get a, we have a construction manager. We've put the paperwork out for them, the RFP, and we hope to get them on board sometime in September so that they can work with the architect and get the numbers down so that we come within the town's budget.
Excellent. Okay. And, and project completion?
Project completion will, will be, will be next summer. You have to have substantial completion, June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
For reimbursement purposes?
Well, your reimbursement actually starts a year after that. But if you hit the June thirtieth, twenty twenty six number, a year from that point, you can start getting your reimbursements.
Excellent.